Good evening, welcome to the Town Council meeting for March 11th, 2019. Tony Longo and Anne Santos are not here tonight, they're traveling. And if we could stand out for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Sherri, do we have anyone for public participation? We do.
Philip Renzi.
Philip Renzi. Please, go on in. Welcome. If you could just state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Philip Renzi and I live at 8 Morgan Ave.
Okay, just to let you know too, it's a three-minute max.
Three.
Right, and then we won't have any remarks back and forth, but we'll make appropriate remarks on a pad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Philip Renzi and I live at 8 Morgan Ave in Wakefield. I'm here tonight to ask for the council's consideration of my interest to continue to serve on the Permanent Building Committee. I have served on the Permanent Building Committee and the Capital Planning Committee since 2016. Both of my terms are up on April 30th of 2019. It is my understanding that a notice was posted in January for any submissions for appointment to these committees with the deadline of February 6th. On February 19th, when I was traveling overseas, I received an email from Steve to ask if I was going to submit a statement of interest for the Capital Planning Committee. He explained that I needed to submit something ASAP. I explained I was out of the country and I would return something as soon as I returned home, and thanked him for the reminder. On Monday, February 25th, I did submit a letter of interest and resume for the Capital Planning Committee. As the week went by and I worked through my jet lag, it dawned on me that my Permanent Building Committee appointment also must have been coming up, since I was appointed to both at the same time three years ago. On Monday, March 4th, I emailed Sherri and Steve a revised letter of interest and resume to seek reappointment to both of the committees and explain my confusion. The next morning, Sherri notified me that I had missed the deadline for the Permanent Building Committee and I would have to resubmit next January, or I could resubmit sooner if there was a resignation. Needless to say, I was quite aggravated with myself for having missed an obvious deadline. I emailed back and forth with Sherri and Steve that day, explained my oversight and my eagerness to stay on the PBC, as well as the Capital Planning. I was told that as I missed the posted deadline, there really was nothing that could be done, as there is a process that must be adhered to. As it stands today, my term for either committee has not yet expired, they both expire April 30th, and I do understand the council has not yet made the appointments, which I believe you're scheduled to do at your March 25th meeting. So I come to you tonight to ask for your leniency and your understanding of my oversight, and request that the council please accept my letter of interest for both committees at your upcoming March 25th meeting. In my three years serving on the Permanent Building Committee, I've participated as a permanent member of both committees, attended and participated in regularly scheduled meetings, and has also served in the working group for the Public Safety Building. Serving on the working group for the Public Safety Building project meant I attended additional meetings throughout the process, from the initial programming to final study recommendations. Recently, when this council approved the formation for the Public Safety Building Reevaluation Committee, I immediately emailed the PBC Chair, Mr. Bertrand, to volunteer to serve on that committee. By profession, as an owner of a property management company, I work with and around studying and planning of various capital projects, day in, day out. This work experience in conjunction with my time serving on the PBC and the working group makes me a perfect candidate for reappointment, especially as this reevaluation committee will be starting up soon, hopefully. I admit, I did miss the deadline, I take responsibility for that, and I should have known my three years was up. I understand Steve only reminded me about the Capital Planning as no one had applied to that. I am a small business owner and I have a family, so to say the least, I lead a very busy life, but even with this full life, I believe I have a responsibility to give back to my community, and I admittedly extremely aggravated at myself for not creating a reminder three years ago that my term was going to be up. I do believe that I would serve well on this committee and with the Capital Planning Committee. So thank you for all you do, and thank you for hearing me out tonight.
Okay, thanks very much.
Okay, thank you all.
Okay, next, Mike, can you bring up your whole crew from the Scholarship Foundation?
Juliette and I will come up and then we'll address.
Thank you for coming tonight, this is quite a crew.
Thank you for having us. So, good evening. My name is Michael Kilkelly and I am the Vice President of the Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield. Our organization was formed in 1960, and over the past 59 years, we have provided over 11,000 financial awards to Wakefield students to assist them in obtaining a higher education. Last year, more than $600,000 was awarded to Wakefield College students and a few graduate school students of all ages, increasing the total awarded since 1960 to over $12.7 million. Some of you have attended our events, including our annual fall golf tournament, our winter dinner dance, jazz brunch, or comedy night, and our very successful trivia team challenge. On Saturday, March 23rd, we will hold our 39th Annual Phone-athon. As Vice President, I serve as the Phone-athon Chairperson. Last year, we raised over $55,000 from the Phone-athon, and this was instrumental in allowing us to award scholarships last year to 283 students, and we hope to increase that number this year. I would like to introduce Juliette Guanci, the President of the TSF Student Directors, who will talk a little bit more about the upcoming Phone-athon. Juliette.
Thank you, Mr. Kilkelly. I'm Juliette Guanci, and I'm the current President of the Student Directors of the Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield. Before I begin, I would like to ask the other student directors who are with me tonight to introduce themselves, so.
My name's Hannah Arisee, and I'm a freshman at Wakefield High.
My name is Emily Federese, and I'm a freshman at Wakefield High.
My name's Nora Scanlon, and I'm a junior at Wakefield High.
My name's Stephanie Curran, and I'm a freshman at Wakefield High.
My name's Olivia Johnson, and I'm a freshman at Wakefield High.
My name's Kayla Porter, and I'm a freshman at Wakefield High.
My name's Emma Johnson, and I'm a freshman at Wakefield High.
My name's Mitra Patel, I'm a junior at Wakefield High, and I'm also the Treasurer of the Student Directors of the Scholarship Foundation.
My name's Chloe Joyce, and I'm a sophomore at Wakefield High.
My name's Christina Joseph, and I'm a junior at Wakefield High.
Thank you. So, one week from this Saturday on March 23rd, we expect to have between 50 and 100 high school students on hand for the 39th Annual TSF Phone-athon. So for the ninth consecutive year, we'll be conducting our Phone-athon at the Americal Civic Center, and we plan to call as many Wakefield residents as we can between the hours of noon and 4:00 PM on that Saturday, and we hope that everyone will respond favorably to our most important fundraiser of the entire year. So we hope to be able to surpass the $55,651 that we raised at last year's Phone-athon. So on behalf of the Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield, we would like the Town Council to endorse our 39th Annual Phone-athon, and we also ask that you please designate the week of March 17th through March 23rd as the Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield Phone-athon Week in Wakefield. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much, that was terrific, I can't believe how many freshmen are here too, that's really good, engaging early. Can we have a motion on that?
I'd like to make a motion to designate March 17th through 23rd as Wakefield Scholarship Foundation Annual Phone-athon Week.
All in favor? Or discussion, do you have any discussion?
Well, can we amend it to also endorse the Phone-athon itself?
Yes.
Sure.
Yes, so both.
So both.
All in favor? Aye. I oppose, hearing none, that's good, we're hearing none. Five-zero, thank you very much, and you got everything you wanted, I think.
Yes, thank you very much.
Very well, thanks for doing all you do.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Great job every year.
It's amazing how many dollars have been raised just last year in all 59 years. I mean, $12.7 million is amazing, $600,000 last year.
It is amazing how generous the citizens of Wakefield are.
Right.
Helping our college students to be able to afford college, so it is pretty amazing.
Right, more expensive every year.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much for coming in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have four, is license and permits. We have a Class II license application for Highline Motorsports. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you? Welcome.
Small operation. I also, as part of the application, well, Michael McCarthy, representing the applicant.
Thanks, bud.
Part of the application, I had submitted kind of a reduced size site for it. So it's just, it's an enlargement of what you've already seen. I thought it might also be helpful to have these kind of Google Earth perspectives of the proposed site.
Michael, if you want, anyone else wants to pull the chair up, just grab chairs from the.
Yeah, okay, nope, I think we've got it.
Okay, just to make sure you're comfortable.
Take a second and get those out. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Michael McCarthy, representing the applicant. With me are Juan Almonte, who's the President of Highline Motorsports, Lady Borgos, Borgos, who's essentially is the applicant from a personal perspective, she'll be at the site, and Mr. Tabey, Frank Tabey, who owns the property of 349 Water Street, and will continue to own it. Highline Motorsports will occupy that property, subject to your approval, as the less see. Lady, it's her first name, Leidy, let me just introduce her to you. She has a rather impressive background, as they say, she is technically applicant, she's the one who'll be in charge day-to-day and kind of overseeing the operation down there. She's a native of Columbia, she has high school and college degrees from Columbia. Upon graduating from college in Columbia, she moved to Spain, where she opened and ran a restaurant for 14 years. After she gave that up, she moved to the United States around 2013, worked as a nanny for a couple of years while she processed through immigration, she's a permanent resident of the country. Since that time, she actually was a native of Wakefield, she lived in Wakefield, as did Mr. Almonte, they're engaged, and they've been engaged for quite some time. They ran the Cafe Yogurt store across from the Civic Center for a couple of years, they were residents of Wakefield for a couple of years, currently they live in Tewksbury, but are hoping to move back to Wakefield, they love Wakefield, this is where they want to make their home. She, for the last couple of years, has worked with Mr. Almonte at Casino Auto Sales in Everett, she's in charge of the finances there, she takes care of the books, she pays the bills, and now she's going to kind of take over the whole operation in Wakefield, this will obviously be a separate operation. Highline Motorsports will be dedicated exclusively and 100% to the Wakefield operation, there won't be any diversification there. Highline and Mr. Almonte have been in the car business for quite a few years, he was up in Salem, New Hampshire with a big outfit, and has operated now for a few years in Everett, as they say, as casino auto sales, there's been no incidents. So collectively, they have good experience in the auto sales industry, and they want to make Wakefield their home of the new business, and actually to move to Wakefield personally as well, so this is a part of that. With regard to the property and the site, 349 Water Street is owned by Woodville LLC, Mr. Tabey's the manager, as I said, Mr. Tabey's a lifelong Wakefield resident, he owns a fair amount of property in Wakefield, as you may know, he's, I think he's very well-respected, he's a prominent property owner. He owns property at 30 Water Street, he owns property on New Salem Street and on Broadway, all the sites are spotless, he'll speak for himself if time permits, but he's committed to making this property just what it's always been since he's owned it, which is clean, well-run, and, you know, without any sort of problems. And certainly Mr. Tabey can speak for that. He also has a relationship with Mr. Almonte, so there's some familiarity there. Mr. Almonte's a tenant of Mr. Tabey's elsewhere, and he's very responsible, tenant, as Mr. Tabey will attest, and as I can attest, he's a gentleman and he's a pleasure to work with. The property itself, as you may know, is business-owned, it's kind of a postage stamp layout, cutout down on Water Street, it's the former home of the Woodville Service Station. The proposed use has been, let me say, vetted very closely by the Board of Appeals. There was a grant of a special permit to allow the auto sales use at this property, that was unanimous vote, it's a very thorough review, there were a number of hearings, there were no neighbors or butters in opposition, and as you'll see from the decision that I submitted as a part of the application, there are some stringent conditions with respect to the operation of the business, including limited display spaces to 20 cars. There's no repair work that will be permitted to be done, no, other than what would be required by statute, and even then, if there's any sort of return repair can be done inside or it can be done in Everett. There's no custom detailing service, it's not going to be a retail kind of mechanics operation, it cannot be. Well, it's in the neighborhood, I think you tell from the satellite view that it's fairly well-buffeted, but nonetheless, the ZBA has a condition which was fully agreeable, that there'll be no additional lighting on the site other than what might be permitted by then conforming signage, and by conforming, I mean conforming to the signed bylaw. It was formerly the site of Planet Aid, which was a clothing collection, distribution facility, this is probably not as traffic intense as that, certainly not as traffic intense or use intense as other uses that would be permitted as of right at the site, including restaurants, retail service establishments, it could be a hair salon, a doctor, a dentist's office, even self-service laundromat. So this isn't, there shouldn't be a high-intensity use, certainly the ZBA approved it, and we had no neighborhood opposition. So that's kind of my pitch about the clients and the operators and the property as well. I don't know, Mr. Tabey, did you have anything you wanted to add, or anybody else?
Just that, you know, we'd make sure that everything, you know, is clean all the time, and I know these people, they rent from me now, they're good people, everything's spotless all the time, so I've never had a problem with them. We've been dealing with them now for, I'm going to say, three or four years, and it's all been good. Otherwise, I wouldn't be here.
And my last comment, Mr. Chairman, if I may, is looking through the application, there was one question, if you signed a contract, it's required by Section 58, Class 1, it wasn't answered, but I'll state for the record that we'd be happy to answer that and then negative, I didn't think it was applicable, I'm not sure that it is, but just so there's no doubt, this is a Class II-only license. Be happy to check the box on that, but I'll state that for the record as well, just in case.
Good.
That's our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, comments from the Town Council?
I just have a quick question, this is just from my knowledge of this kind of business. So when people come to see the vehicles, they take test drives, will they drive around the neighborhood and everything?
Yes.
Okay. So, I mean, there is a school around the corner and all of that, I'm sure that they comply with all the laws, but.
We usually have one of the salesperson go with the client.
Perfect.
Like that, they don't do speed or go somewhere else.
Excellent, thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Michael, thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Mr. Tabey, the site right now has been very clean since you've taken ownership of it.
Yes.
I really appreciate that, and I look forward to that happening, continuing as we move forward. As a car lot in the middle of a residential community, what I wouldn't want to see on signage is those eight-foot waving flags, or anything streamers going across like you do on some lots, okay? You're in a residential zone, I would prefer not to see that if all possible. If you have your signage that you have already on there for your building, that's fine, even the A-frames, which are allowed now, are okay if you put that up, but as far as those stand-up signs, we try our best to not have those in the confines of Wakefield, so we just.
Understood, I'll emphasize that again, I will say that the ZBA did condition it no signage, except that permitted in conformance with the bylaw, I dare say most of what you might be describing would not be in conformance.
Thank you, Michael.
Ed, I do think you've done a good job of cleaning up the site, and I think you repaved it just a few years ago, right?
Yes.
And so that's certainly an improvement. One of the challenges, I think, that the site presents is, it is in a residential area, although it's a lot of asphalt, and it's a very hard surface when you think about it. Have you considered, or where do you stand in terms of any kind of improvements you could do to soften the space up, either with landscaping or trees, so that it comports more with the look and feel of that residential area on Water Street? I know there is some commercial on Water Street, no doubt, but that just really, it's stark, it's paved and it's lined, and it's visioning a lot of cars, and it's just going to, I think, change that character, so have you considered ways you could perhaps mitigate that?
Well, what I did when I did it over is, I just paved what was paved.
Right.
Originally, didn't change any of that, and if you looked in the back, we planted all grass along the sides, and naturally left whatever trees were there, and that's kind of, you know, because we wanted greenery too, you know, and that's how we went with it, because it is a commercial site, you do need some parking, so that's why we went with.
And I totally get it, I guess I'm thinking more in terms of, say, the street frontage, so along Water Street, it's all pavement right now, there's no breaks, there's no plantings, there are no trees of any sort, and I think that there's a way that that can be enhanced without losing the commercial viability of the space.
It's amazing, we had plans already to figure something on the frontage, to put like big pots or some plants, or something nice, not something too out of the ordinary, but we were planning to make it look a little bit more warm and more nicer with some plants and stuff like that in the front, like you were saying.
I would say too, originally when Planet Aid went in, and Mr. Tabey first bought it, that was the tenant coming in, we did talk a great deal at the ZBA about exactly the point you're making, they had the exact same concern. We did, you know, there was the grass added, there was some landscaping, some greenery added, I understand that it would be beneficial to have more, and desirable to have more, but it wasn't a point that was omitted, and it was something that a lot of thought went into, with respect to how much greenery can be added against the need for the site to be functional. And there was talk about those spots out front, they traded off, but the parking ratios for the last use were such that it really couldn't, we went through the iteration of plans that showed green space out there, but the parking didn't really work in the trade-off, even with the ZBA, the trade-off was, the site's still got to work, and the parking is similar here, we're at the minimum amount of employee parking. Granted, there's spaces there for the auto sales, I just didn't want you to think it was something that wasn't.
No, I'm just thinking, you know, right now, it's a neighbor that has a lot of pavement, and that has a commercial feel in and of itself, you add 20 vehicles onto this, it feels very commercial very quickly, and I have some hesitation about, and I understand that this is a commercial site, so I'm not saying that, you know, you put a bunch of evergreens along the front and kill your business, I get that, I understand the balancing of interests here, but I'd like to think that there's some way that there could be a few cutouts or something, so that we can, you know, have some trees put in or something along there to at least soften it, so it feels more in line with a lot of the other Water Street properties. I mean, your aerial shows, I mean, this actually doesn't do it justice because you paved that sense, and so it actually looks nicer than this aerial shows, but you know, there's just a lot of residential, and the commercial things like the parking lots and things are all kind of tucked back, you know, and some of the other, so there's a certain, when you drive down there, if there's a way that you could mitigate that in some way.
We'll take a look at it, we'll have to go back to the ZBA for any sort of substantial site modification, but we'll take a look at, I mean, Mr. Almonte's indicated the large planters and whatnot, and break the.
Well, it sounded like those big pots, you could put in, you know, make it look nice.
Right.
Yeah. Take a look at it, I understand the point, don't disagree with it.
Paul. Just one, one more question. At the rear of the edge of pavement on the right-hand side where the 16 cars are going, is there going to be a curb placed along that back so the cars can't get put onto the grass area?
We never put a curb, but they.
Is it going to be some sort of stop now so that the cars don't go by mistake?
Those are display spaces, so there won't be, those won't be people pulling in, those are just cars parked.
No, no, I understand that.
Okay.
When we went through with the conservation and stuff, they loved the idea of the grass and stuff, and they didn't even ask me to do it, we just, you know, we wanted the green, so that's what we did. Originally, I had some plans of putting some type of trees out there, I just never got to it, you know, I just, I couldn't pick what I wanted at the time, you know.
Because there's some other options too.
Sure, go ahead.
I know, Paul, we had a good discussion about this recently in another context, but there are some options where you can have like larger planters and put in trees that have smaller root balls that are able to be, you know, self-contained that way, so as to not have to unearth everything in order to, you know, have a presence there.
Like uptown, you mean, like they have uptown on the side, is that what you're saying?
Right, but you don't, it doesn't have to go in the ground, it can go into larger planters basically, trees that'll have a certain height, I think it's like 15 feet or something, right?
That's right.
I mean, they're more manageable, even something like that, so that you're able to soften the appearance, I think would make a huge difference. If you're able to commit to something like that, that would, I think, be really meaningful to this body, or at least me.
I mean, I don't see why not, it's not a problem, especially in the corners and maybe in the middle, and, you know, it's just knowing what to put up.
You know, I frankly think it would enhance the property overall, it would help your business, it would help the neighbors and the neighborhood generally, and it'd make it more attractive, you know.
Oh, I agree, I like.
So, yes, we'll commit.
All right.
So dentists could tell them what particular tree would fit into the raised box, so that I have a small root ball and only grow 10 to 15 feet high, so that would be a perfect situation where you wouldn't have to.
Thank you for the commitment, and we're going to have the details on that going forward, but I appreciate the commitment on that and the willingness to do it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mike, how soon are you going back to the ZBA, is that coming up?
We'll have to, we don't have to go back to the ZBA unless we modify the site.
Okay, okay.
So with respect to these, I just, we'll go to get probably the blessing of the building inspected, so it's not a substantial change, if it is, then we'll have to go in for a site change.
I'm just curious, Steve, how many Class II licenses do we have in town? Is there a limit?
There's no limit by law.
And how many do we have roughly, would you say?
We're like, I think we're like 20.
Ones with display, which is different than there are without display, I would say we have a handful of display, maybe less than 10, five to 10 that display. A lot of people just go to auctions, probably have 30 of those.
Okay, yeah, I just was curious.
Any comments, questions? Sounds great, we like having more business in town to begin with, so this is great, and I'm sure you guys are excited about this. So a couple tweaks here and there will make the street look better and the lot, as long as it doesn't take away from the business, as Ed was saying.
Right. We'll work it out.
Okay.
We need a motion.
Yep, can I have a motion?
So, I'll make a motion to approve this, again with the understanding that there's been a commitment made to, for the betterment of the frontage.
Noted.
Right, correct. Second? All in favor? Five-zero?
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, good luck with everything. So Harringtons is here, right? Okay, that's fine. Okay, next, we have 4B, the liquor license, a request from Harringtons to serve alcohol beginning at 10:00 AM on Sunday, March 17th, 2019, current license is Sundays from noon until 1:00 AM. Anyone from Harringtons here, by any chance? No?
They make this request every time.
Not every year, every time St. Patrick's Day is on a Sunday.
You don't want to talk about them, they're outside, you know. Any comments or conversation on this one?
Do we know, what time would they open up normally, like on?
Noon.
But on, like, say, a Saturday?
Saturday, they usually open up around 11:00. But if it were St. Patrick's Day, they'd open up at noon as well, at 10:00 as well.
At 10:00.
Right.
So we're really talking about like an hour variance from what a weekend would otherwise be in normal circumstances?
They can watch the St. Patrick's Day events in Boston on the TV.
And they've been doing this since they've been there, so it's not something new. Without any further conversation, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the request from Harringtons to serve alcohol beginning at 10:00 AM on Sunday, March 17th, 2019, to extend the current license, which begins at noon until 1:00 AM.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero? Thank you. No blarney on that one. Okay. To Wakefield Community Partnership, a liquor license for April 13, 2019. Mr. Ross?
Good evening.
Mr. Tyre?
Good evening.
Welcome. State your names and.
Christopher Tyre, 27 Jackson Lane.
Thank you.
And I'm Sean Ross, 1 Eaton Street.
Sometimes known as Superman. Welcome.
Very nice.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
So as a part of the Wakefield Community Partnership's events this year, for which we came before the Town Council, two weeks ago, I think now, we are now asking for the first event that we have a liquor license for our North Avenue Block Party, which will be from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. And we have a closure on North Avenue that was agreed upon previously from 12:30 to 3:30, and that's between Chestnut and Albion Street.
Any other comments, conversation? I missed this meeting, but I did watch it on close target. Any other follow-up? Julie?
So you'll be providing your own alcohol and serving it in that closed area?
That's correct.
Okay.
We also are talking to one of the area establishments who may wish to add beer and wine with their food offering, so that would be on them, not us.
Okay.
But we would also set it up like La Piazza, like we do at Festival Italia, where it'd be blocked off.
It would be blocked off.
You know, for identification purposes.
Okay.
It'd be a 20 by 20 area.
Okay, so it'll be in a very discreet area where it'll be monitored, people coming in.
Yes.
And presumably, people leaving without alcohol.
Yes. You can't leave the area with alcohol, period.
Okay. I will have to say, I was a little disappointed to see this come up because we talked last time about what was being approved and, not disappointed that it's coming up, but just, it would've been nice to kind of approve everything altogether, like we had talked about Main Streets. But that's just, that's just an observation. I think as long as it's gonna be lordened off, I mean, in general, I'm not super enthusiastic about street drinking in the middle of the afternoon on a Saturday on a Main Road, but I think as long as it's gonna be well-controlled and obviously you have a track record of doing it well, so I have full confidence it'll be a very successful event.
Thank you.
Paul?
Did you have a restaurant right now committed that they were interested in serving alcohol that day?
Yes, today's one of the establishments.
Who is the restaurant that's committed?
Tono.
Tono's has committed to serve the alcohol? Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments?
So we still need a motion?
We still need a motion.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the Wakefield Community Partnership's request for a four-day liquor license for alcohol to be served on April 13 with a waiver of the $50 fee because they're a Wakefield nonprofit.
Right. Second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Congratulations. Good luck. Okay, next, we have the approval of minutes from the Regular Board meeting, February 25, 2019. All in favor?
Need a motion first.
Okay, I want a motion first. I wasn't here, but yeah, I'm sure it was good.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Five zero. Thank you very much. Actually, I probably have to abstain, but that's all right. Okay, Presentation Action Item. Main Streets, Event March 16, 2019, Ratification of Approval and the One-Day Liquor License Welcome. Just state your name and address, it'd be great.
Susan Wetmore, 12 Sunset Drive.
Bob Malhite, 157 Montrose Ave.
Bob, Susan, welcome.
Thank you. So we're just gonna kind of read off and give you guys the whole spiel and we'll kind of go from there. So, first off, Wakefield Main Streets is here tonight to present information about our planned St. Patrick's Day pop-up event. First of all, we apologize for any miscommunication and process that has taken place. Our organization experienced some transition while planning for our first street event, which caused things to not go as smoothly as we had hoped. We recognize the importance of following processes in place and intend to adhere to them in the future, just as our organization always has. That being said, our plans for the event are ready to move forward. We would like to sincerely thank the Council for giving us this opportunity. It is greatly appreciated. As you know, Wakefield Main Streets is part of a national Main Streets organization. One goal shared by all the Main Streets programs is to bring people downtown to increase foot traffic and awareness, helping to promote economic development and creating a better sense of community. This is what we are planning to do. We are looking forward to hosting this new event, bringing people downtown. Other Main Street groups and other communities have had successful pop-up events, and we have taken a look at their model and successes, and we want to try to replicate that here in Wakefield. Although this particular event has not been executed in Wakefield before, all the pieces have been a part of other Wakefield traditions that have proven to be very successful. Here's what we are planning.
Sure. The event will take place on Saturday, March 16, from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM on Albion Street, from Main Street to Foster. We would like to have this small section of the street closed down from 3:00 to 8:00 PM with no parking from 1:00 to 8:00 PM. Detours will be in place and well-marked. The area we will be using will be fenced in with the opening at Main Street for attendees to pay and to be admitted into the event. The cost will be $5 per person for anyone over 21. Under 21 will be free of charge as long as they are accompanied by an adult. The reason we will charge the $5 fee is to help to break some costs of this event. Importantly, the sidewalks from Main Street to Foster Street will not be blocked at any time on March 16 for the merchants to conduct business. The area of the event abuts some vacant storefronts, the Albion Cultural Exchange, and some businesses with operating hours that do not conflict with this event. Any merchants west of this event on Albion Street will be fully accessible via foot and vehicular traffic, which will be rerouted with signage. We have delivered letters to all merchants involved, as well as businesses on the rest of Albion Street. We have had no objections and we are excited about this opportunity to draw people to the area. Responsible enjoyment is a top priority for us. We will have two TIP certified Wakefield Main Street board members at the entrance to check IDs and to provide a green bracelet, very attractive and Irish, to show that they are over 21, as well as other volunteers to collect the money, and there can be no re-entry. Whenever possible in securing vendors, we seek to support Wakefield businesses and residents. Inside the fenced-in area, we will have a food and beverage for purchase. Do you want me to keep going?
Sure, you're doing great.
Okay. The food truck is Vibe Food Truck, serving hot dogs, hamburgers, sausage peppers and onions, as well as mac and cheese, water and soda. The owner of Vibe Food Truck lives in Linfield and his partner lives in Wakefield. House Calls Catering, serving clam chowder, is a Wakefield caterer. And the Pizza Goddess, of course, serving pizza. We will also have a beer truck from Ipswich Ale. They will have two certified bartenders on board who will use their training to make decisions about serving patrons. For the latter two vendors, our town does not have a local brewery and we are not aware of any mobile wood-fired pizza businesses in town. All vendors will be handling their own transactions. Keep going? Do you want me to finish? Okay. All permits have been applied for, as well as the liquor license that you have in front of you tonight, and the food vendors have all applied for food permits from the Board of Health. We have spoken with the DPW, the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department, police and fire, and have laid out plans with them as is the normal process for street events. We, Wakefield Main Streets, feel that Wakefield is a wonderful, vibrant community and we want to let residents enjoy what the downtown has to offer. If we have a vibrant downtown, it obviously helps the economy of the town. Wakefield Main Streets is proud to have partnered with the town of Wakefield on the past products, projects of beautification, like the benches, lights and flowers, wayfinding and the kiosks, and we look forward to that partnership continuing. We have invested over $170,000 in the downtown area with events and projects like the pop-up. We will continue to revitalize the downtown and continue to make Wakefield a great place to live and work. So we would take questions.
Thank you very much. That was terrific. And you have done an awful lot for the town too, so thank you for the Town Council. Thank you both and their team. Questions, comments?
Ed? I think I'll just say, thank you for, you know, acknowledging that this was not the smooth process that I know you guys are capable of and that you normally follow. And I'm glad we're able to be here for the ratification tonight, having a fuller understanding of exactly what the event entails in detail, but thank you for that. Thank you for that acknowledgement and certainly. I wish the event much success, as you've had with many other events, and I very much support these efforts to try to have more of these smaller events within the downtown to try to attract, you know, foot traffic. It has a great effect on a lot of the other businesses too. They start off at the pop-up, then maybe they go and grab dinner somewhere downtown or they run into one of the shops, and so it's a real nice synergy that you end up having when you have these types of events. And just having that kind of energy, you know, downtown, you mentioned vibrancy, I think that's huge. It's so important. So thank you for your efforts in that regard because, you know, a vibrant downtown is a successful downtown and it makes for a better community as a whole, so thank you for that.
We agree.
And I'll just thank you for the controls that you're putting around, around responsible drinking and having the TIP certified in bartenders. I think that's really important, particularly on St. Patrick's Day, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Comments?
No. Thank you. And I think something that wasn't in your statements is, I appreciate you coming in, but you've also talked to other, the public safety departments and DPW and town officials to make this as successful as possible, and I think that's really important for us to know, but also for people in the community to know, so your events are always successful. And thank you for coming in today to tell us a little bit about the details.
Can I have a motion?
I would move to approve the Wakefield Main Streets liquor license for the St. Patrick's Day pop-up event on March 16 and also for ratification of approval of the event from the last meeting.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Five zero? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Wear green.
See you Saturday.
Do us proud.
I want my green.
See you there. I did. Thank you, Susan. Thanks, Bob. Okay. Okay, next, we have the Traffic Advisory Recommendations. We have six, and we have Lieutenant Scori, always handsome, always ready to help, and you have a lot of recommendations.
I'll try to make this quick. There's still some people in the hallway out there.
No, it's okay. These are all important, so take your time. The first one is the one parking space immediately adjacent to the south of the driveway at 894 Main Street be eliminated, and then a no parking sign with an arrow pointing towards the driveway being sold 18 feet to the south of the intersection.
That's correct. I hope everybody has the picture that I provided.
Yes.
There's an X to the one parking space that we're looking to eliminate. The site visibility is severely limited for the northbound traffic there with that one parking space occupied. Recently, we changed the four parking spaces to the north of that driveway to the time-restricted of no parking between 6:00 AM and 10:00 AM, and then no parking between 3:00 and 6:00. That has helped alleviate any site visibility issues in the morning and afternoon. So with this parking space right up to the edge of the driveway, you really can't see any traffic that's coming northbound. So we feel that if we eliminate that one spot, it'll make that driveway much safer. And it's also similar to other restrictions that we've placed around the condominium buildings at 974 Main Street and 997 Main Street.
Comments, questions? So we should just do one, one and two? Okay. Can I have a motion on the number one?
That we approve the request from the Traffic Advisory Committee with the removal of the one parking space on Main Street down by the, which condominium is that?
894 Main Street.
894 Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Number two?
Number two is a request from the Department of Public Works for no parking here to corner signs on Pearl Street where it intersects with Main Street. TSE is recommending these signs be installed on both the north and south sides of Pearl Street, 20 feet from the intersection with Main Street. I did a site visit to the street and there were cars parked close to Main Street, making the turn fairly difficult. So I think with the 20-foot posting, it would help with the turning movements.
Make a big difference, yes. Questions, comments on the number two? Okay. I have a motion on number two?
I move that we approve the installation of no parking here to corner signs on the both sides of Pearl Street, the north and south sides of Pearl Street.
Yes.
Thank you, Julie. Second? Paul? All in favor? Opposed? Same then? Five zero. Number three?
Thank you. I had the same request from the DPW for no parking here to corner signs on Cutter Street where it intersects with North Avenue. And the TAC is recommending the signs be installed on both the north and south sides of Cutter Street, 20 feet from the intersection of North Avenue. Same situation existed there, cars parking too close to North Ave.
All right. Questions, comments? Hearing none? Could I have a motion on number three?
I move that we approve the installation of no parking here to corner signs on Cutter Street, both north and south sides.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Five zero. Number four?
Several years ago, the Chestnut Street Emerson Street intersection was made a four-way stop to a high volume of traffic accidents and a lack of site visibility for vehicles crossing Chestnut Street. Recently, vehicles have been parking too close to the intersection, once again limiting the site distance for vehicles on Emerson Street. We are requesting no parking here to corner signs be placed around the intersection on both Chestnut and Emerson Street, 20 feet from where the roads intersect.
Questions, comments? Okay, could I have a motion on number four?
I'll make a motion that we authorize the installation of no parking here at the corner on all four corners of the intersection of Chestnut Street and Emerson Street, 20 feet from where the road intersects.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you. Number five?
The resident of 307 Salem Street has requested signs on the front of their property prohibiting parking. 307 Salem Street is adjacent to the rear of the prime gas station and sliced pizza. The resident reports that delivery trucks and customers frequently park on the front edge of their property, causing damage to the lawn and limiting visibility while exiting the driveway. The TSE is recommending signs that read "No Stopping, No Standing" be installed at both edges of the property. These signs will prohibit delivery trucks, which are allowed to temporarily stop in areas that are posted "No parking." And I did provide a picture of the front of the property of three oh seven Salem Street, where you can see where these signs would be posted.
You know what's interesting about that one is even though the homeowner put out some rocks, some big boulders there, it still didn't deter people from pulling onto his lawn and parking and standing. In a tough location.
I live right across the street from that, too, so I get it.
Another added issue there is there is a driveway right behind the gas station that goes to the property on Lowell Street.
That goes straight through.
So you have visibility issues with that driveway, as well as visibility issues from the driveway, three oh seven Salem Street.
Questions, comments on that one? Can I have a motion on number five for the no stopping, no standing? Truned down.
I like that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, five zero. Thank you. Number six?
And finally, the business owner of Nine Lakes Street reports that delivery vehicles are not able to back into his business lot due to vehicles parking on the east side of Lake Street, adjacent to the Harvard Mills Building. There's parking for three vehicles in the area in question with no signage either limiting parking to a certain time or prohibiting parking. There is a sign on the east side of Lake Street closer to Albion that reads "No parking." Schedule one of the town's parking rules state that parking on the east side of Lake Street is restricted to two hours. However, due to the narrow width of the roadway in this section of Lake Street and the number of commercial driveways, the TSE is recommending that the east side of Lake Street be posted "No parking" from Maple Street to Albion Street. The rest of the parking on the east side of Lake Street would remain two hours from Maple to Broadway. And I included a photo as well there.
Questions, comments?
Lieutenant, this is the area I think we had spoken about a few months ago.
We did.
Right? And this, so this, Maple would go all the way down to the entrance to where those condominiums are, on the west side of, is that right?
I believe the driveway is somewhat offset from Maple Street, but it is close.
Okay. Because I know that that is a problem, especially during rush hour where cars are coming down and parking and cars can't get through. So would that bring us from Albion all the way down to that driveway where the condominium entrances?
It would. There would be no parking on both sides of Lake Street from Albion down to Maple, almost lining up with that driveway to the condominium building.
Okay. Because I know that that has been a problem area for some time.
And it's not posted with any signs, so I think what we have there is an issue maybe with commuters parking there.
Yeah.
But even to put a two-hour limit on those spaces, it would still create issues with vehicles backing into Nine Lakes Street.
And we just, I just feel like we don't have the width for this one.
No, the road doesn't narrow down in that one area.
Right. So I think that this is going to be a great improvement, actually, for the folks living in that area. So I would...
No, no, no. If he's making the motion, I'll second.
I would just move to make a motion to make Lake Street from Albion down to Maple, no parking east and west sides.
Yes. I'll second.
Second, okay. All in favor? I'll oppose.
I'm for, but I just want to say something.
Okay, sure.
We're making changes to Schedule One. LT.
I know we spent some time on that.
I know we did. So are we going to incorporate all the changes at some point into that Schedule One that we've done like this on many other meetings?
Yes.
Okay. So I really would like to get all the stuff that we have approved to you in your committee onto that Schedule One at some point, just so that there's a documentation of it. Okay? Because now we're changing it already.
Right.
And I just, it should be noted on our approvals that the Schedule One needs to be updated every time we do an approval, instead of just letting it sit there and accumulate. Like, right now, there must be at least forty or more that we've done over time. So that's my only comment.
Good footnote. That's good. Okay, so what's in?
Now you can do all in favor.
Okay. We already did.
Okay.
Okay, number six. Oh, that was it?
That was it.
Oh, that was it. Oh, thank you. Scori, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, next the contract with RCN. Oh, Tom.
Mr. Chairman, I have proposed to you a draft contract for the renewal of the RCN license that I'd ask you to vote on and sign. In brief, it extends the term of the RCN license by ten years. It adds two high-definition channels, I'm sorry, three, for public, educational and governmental use. And these are in addition to the three existing standard definition channels. And this will be at RCN's costs with respect to the equipment at their head end. It provides that they will pay one percent of gross cable revenues for PEG support, again, public, educational and governmental, and they will continue to pay four point five percent as their franchise fee. A new provision here that I had suggested is an option on the town's part to audit the books of RCN at our expense. However, if we find that they understated their earnings, then the cost is shifted to them. And they agreed to that. In all other respects, the contract would remain the same as it currently is.
Questions, comments? Julie?
I have a question. Number five, bundling of services. Does that in any way impact with the diminishing people taking cable with people cutting the cable, that they would still have to pay a certain percentage of bundled services? How do you interpret that?
You know, actually, you have an old version. That's the one thing I asked for that they didn't agree to, and I can discuss that with you.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I have two copies of the agreement that has been agreed to in principle by RCN, and I'd asked that the board sign both. But the one thing I asked for that they said no to was a bundling provision. My concern here is what if they offer to consumers a bundle of cable and other services and they discount the price? What price do they attribute to the cable portion? Because that's what we use to determine gross revenues and get the one percent and the four point five percent. And they thought about it, and I had some back and forth with Tom Steele, their representative, and he said, "Look, we can't do this. If the company ever does any kind of bundling offer, it does it on a company-wide basis. We can't afford to carve out an exception for one town." I think that makes sense. Also, you didn't mention it, but we have no such provision with respect to either of the other providers, and there is this concept of the level playing field. So it was a rather aggressive request on our part to begin with. This is probably as good as we can expect, and I want to call attention in particular to the fact that this is a ten-year renewal. Verizon won't agree to anything over five years at this point because the future is so murky for cable providers generally. And I think the view among most municipalities is a long contract favor for the municipality. Generally, towns look for that. So I would have liked to get the anti-bundling or the bundling contingency provision. It's not available, and I think this is as good as we're going to get.
Questions?
Can I ask one other? So with the FCC ruling that is being considered, just a change of law, so if there is a federal regulation that changes how cable have to pay their percentage of fees, does this contract become null and void, or is it renegotiated? Like, what happens when there's a regulatory change like that, just in general?
There is no provision to render the contract null and void.
Okay.
So I really couldn't speak hypothetically about any particular change. I think we'd have to revisit that.
Okay, at the time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Tom, I just wanted to thank you for your work on this. I think it's great, and I do think you got us a pretty favorable deal here, especially like the option of audit. I like that built in because it disincentivizes them from being anything but, you know, forthcoming, certainly, with the option of it falling back on them from a cost perspective ultimately if what they're providing isn't accurate. So thank you for that.
Thanks. And I had a lot of help from local people who were deep into this field, Tom Stapleton and others, Todd Bowden.
Okay. And Tom Stapleton thought it was a good idea as well. Okay. Can I have a motion on this?
I'll move that we accept the third amendment to the cable television final license between the town and RCN.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor of the RCN contract? Opposed?
I just have to abstain. I'm on the WCAT board.
Okay. So four with an abstention, okay.
So I have two execution originals. I'd ask that both of them be signed.
Okay. Okay, next we have the library request to accept and expand gifts to the library in the amount of two thousand one hundred and ten dollars from various donors with thanks. Any second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Five zero. My favorite part of the meeting, Mr. Gill, can you come up to the staging? Welcome. We don't want to talk about fiscal year 2020 without Mr. Gill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome.
The first two budgets we'll look at tonight, the general insurance budget and the workers' comp budget. We have the town's insurance agent next to me, John Spinello. Steve and I have worked with John for many years. John does a great job for us. The general insurance budget, we're recommending an increase to this budget of seven thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars. This increase breaks down six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars to the tax levy portion of the budget, four hundred and ten dollars to the water division, and two hundred and fifty-three dollars to the sewer division. This budget covers town buildings, motor vehicles and professional liability. The total budget request for fiscal 2020 is four hundred thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars, with three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three twenty-five coming from tax levy, twenty thousand seven hundred and sixty coming from the water enterprise, and twelve thousand three seventy-three coming from the sewer enterprise.
I do agree with Kevin. John Spinello does a fabulous job for us, and he's always calling me with ways that we can, suggestions that we can save money on these budgets, and really has been a great partner here. And I would note that, you know, this budget is going up one point nine three percent, which is fabulous job.
Questions, comments?
Great job.
Well, that's good. Can I have a motion for the general insurance? Number thirty-nine.
I'll make a motion that we approve the budget number thirty-nine as presented by Mr. Gill in the amount of four hundred, four hundred thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none, five zero. Number two?
Our second budget is the workers' comp budget. We're recommending an increase to this budget over fiscal 2019 of forty-eight thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars. This increase breaks down fifty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollar increase to the tax levy portion, a small decrease to the water division of four hundred and twenty-two dollars, a small increase to the sewer division of two hundred and four dollars, and a decrease to the municipal light portion of the budget of ten thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. The total budget request for fiscal 2020 is five hundred and forty-eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars, with four hundred and eighty, four hundred and eighty thousand seven eighty-seven coming from tax levy, thirteen thousand two hundred and thirty coming from the enterprise, water enterprise, eight thousand nine ninety-one coming from the sewer enterprise, and forty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty coming from the gas and light department.
Okay, questions, comments on number two?
So Kevin, this budget seems like it's up considerably, like almost ten percent, nine point seven percent. Can you maybe talk a little bit about what the factors are that are driving that up?
Sure. I'll turn that over to John.
Well, our experience modification, there's two parts to it. Our experience model is one point two zero, which is losses under five thousand dollars, and that measures frequency. And we have our ARAP charge, which is our risk adjustment premium, which measures severity, so losses in excess of five thousand dollars. So it went from, you know, one point one five and one point one two to one point two oh. So if you look in the expected losses that I sent you, and also the actual losses, for that three-year period, we had really a million dollars in losses for that three years. Our expected losses were somewhere around six twenty. So our mod is going to go up when that happens. For us to get below our expected losses is a stretch. You know, I just want to say that we have a high exposure to workers' compensation in this town and a lot of towns similar to us. We provide a lot of services. We have a light department. We have seventeen classifications. I sent those out also. The only thing we don't do is we don't have a hockey rink, we don't have a golf course, and we don't do trash removal. Other than that, we have it all. And if you talk to anybody in underwriting about municipalities like us, we're kind of like the belly of the beast, that you have to expect losses here. We were averaging thirty-five losses, and we're down in the twenties right now. The problem you have is that you have older employees sometimes who do get hurt, so they're longer to get back to work. They want to get back, but their bodies are compromised already. And that's what we see. In one of those years, we had four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in losses. So half our losses came in one policy period. So that's going to really throw us off. That drops off next year. And right as of right now, we have a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in losses to date as of last week, so we're having a good year. Drop off that four sixty-eight, the experience model starts to go down. The other factor here is, I look back and I was telling Kevin earlier that I went back five policy periods, and our audited payroll was thirty-eight million dollars. Right now, we're approaching very close to fifty million. And the three things that will influence this budget, payroll, experience, and rate increase or decrease. Last year, believe it or not, we had a thirteen point nine percent rate decrease. So our mod would have driven that had that rate increase, decrease not happened. So if you look at the teacher rate that I sent out, last year was seventy-nine cents. It's down to sixty-eight cents. So eleven cents doesn't seem like a lot, but on thirty-three million dollar payroll, that's over thirty-six thousand dollars. So we actually did pretty well considering our mod. But just to go back on that four sixty-eight that I sent, that's going to drop off. And if we can just have one year, and I've said to Steve probably ten years, I just want to have one year under a hundred thousand dollars in losses because it would set us up nicely for three years. And the last thing I want to say is, this isn't about me, it's about, it's a team effort. Steve and I talk about losses. I send them the loss runs every month with Kevin, and Amy does a great job down at H.R., so it's really all of us talking about losses. And we know, we know exactly what's going on in the town in terms of, you know, who's out and how long they're going to be out. So anyway, I didn't mean to go off on a tangent.
If you go through those losses, if I can jump in, so two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen, like John said, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand. So that is, that's embedded in here for three years, right? Two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen, it's two forty-four. Two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen, two seventy-nine. So this year is looking...
We're doing well.
We're doing well, so next year, we hope, will be better because we'll have based on three better years, so.
So every single rate class, okay, let's take the teachers, okay? Code is eighty-eight, sixty-eight. In the, it's sixty-eight cents for a hundred dollars a payroll. Out of that sixty-eight cents, thirty-five cents of that is attributed to losses by the state. That's our state average. So you take the thirty-five cents, you multiply it by the payroll, that is what is one expected loss for one code. If you get your, if you hit your expected losses, your experience mod should be one point zero because that's what is expected. We're consistently over that. It doesn't, it doesn't bother us, it doesn't bother me if we're a little bit over because it's just, it's what we do here. But that four sixty-eight was just more of an aberration than anything. It doesn't, it's not unusual, so we're kind of trending the way we should be, so.
How many class codes again did you say?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. So, and they all have huge variance on the exposures. So, you know, you have, teachers is pretty, you know, pretty small exposure overall.
But you have two rates. You have on-premises and off-premises.
Right.
Okay? On-premises is easier to control, like a teacher rate is sixty-eight cents, so it's cheaper. We get streets and roads, and that rate is five dollars, and those are, you know, people doing construction, so they tend to be a little bit higher. But just to give you one example, some of us, it was two thousand seventeen, it was right after Thanksgiving, it was raining for about a month, it seemed like. And all of a sudden, it got real cold. And I remember talking to Steve, because he's the optimist and I'm the pessimist, but I was talking to him in December, and I said, "You know, we only have thirty-two thousand dollars in losses through six months, which is incredible." And, but I said, "You know, we're getting some heavier cold weather in here, that we're going to get some freezing, and then we've got some snow." And if you look at the loss run that I sent out, in one day, on January tenth, two thousand eighteen, two people fell in black ice. It was a hundred and ten thousand dollars for those two. One-third of our losses for the year happened in one day. So sometimes it's just the weather and weird things that happen.
There's not a lot of control factors, though, with seventeen codes. I mean, this is still very good, I mean, in my opinion. But again, you can't really do a lot to control the workers' compensation.
I think we do a good job. I think the supervisor, I think it starts at the top. But I was talking to Amy earlier and, you know, we have over 700 employees. That's a lot of employees. So we have a high exposure to losses here. So to have 25 in a year on the average, I think that's pretty good.
I agree.
And then just wondering, Kevin, on the variation for the transfers, especially from light, can you maybe speak to that a little bit, why there is such a difference?
It all comes down to the actual codes that John has mentioned and the experience that, so there will be fluctuations.
I know you don't like to hear this, but the biggest benefit of that rate decrease last year was the light department. So, but I mean, one of their rates went down by almost a full dollar and a million dollars in payroll. So it was, it was a huge number. So that's why you see that their numbers are down percentage-wise more than any, more than any other.
Yeah, because they're almost 18 and a half percent basically, so it's pretty...
Yeah. It just depends on the rate in their payroll.
But it sounds like we have a bit of a latent effect in that drop-off would be for FY '21 then. You would expect if things stayed the course.
Don't answer that.
Well, let's just say we have three and a half months. If we can keep it under 220, we're doing really well.
All right.
It's a moving target though. I think it's really good.
Well, we have three losses there that I'm under consideration. One, we're going to have a, we're definitely going to have a decrease in the value of that because he's back to work and he's fine. We're just waiting for some medical bills. The other two, I'm not sure that one's going to come back at all. And the other one, we're going to need surgery, so that might go, so one might go up, one might go down, but just, you know, see how things go.
Okay, can I have a motion on, for comp?
I'll make a motion that we approve the workman's compensation budget in the amount of $548,988 as presented by Mr. Gill. And Mr.?
Do you have a second?
Thanks, Paul.
Do you have a second?
Marianne, second.
Oh, Marianne, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Seeing then, five zero. Thanks very much, John. Okay, next, the group health insurance, number three, number 46.
Yes, next budget, group health insurance. We have Amy Fozziati, the town's human resource manager. For fiscal 2020, we're recommending an increase to this budget of $175,884. This increase breaks down $80,650 to the tax levy. Under that, under personal services, there's an increase of $5,257, which is for contractual and negotiated increases. There's an increase in the transfers from the enterprise fund, total of $95,234. I will point out that this budget also includes $1,675,000 contribution to the town's OPEB liability account. That account currently has approximately $14.8 million in it. The total budget request for fiscal 2020 is $13,371,934, with $11,642,668 coming from tax levy, $372,525 from the water enterprise, $261,689 coming from the sewer enterprise, and $1,095,052 coming from the gas and light enterprise.
You know, we talk about managed healthcare today. That's the term, managed healthcare. And we manage our own healthcare. Amy and Karen do an unbelievable job managing the healthcare for the town. Because we've been in the GIC for eight years now?
Since 2012.
2012, okay. We're probably paying almost about what we were before we got into the GIC, including the fact that we're putting $1,006 into OPEB. It's a great success story. And part of it is the fact that Amy and Karen, they go out, they work with almost everybody on their insurance. Because the GIC is a pool of carriers. You can go to, what's neighborhood health plan now, All?
Always.
Always. You can go to Tufts. You can go to Harvard. And oftentimes, people will say, well, I'm going to go, the most expensive health insurance is the best. It's not. It's not. The doctors are the same. The hospitals are the same. You're just paying more for your premium. So they do a great job of working with the staff. The staff trusts them. We have a great relationship with the union representatives. And kudos to that department for keeping that budget at 0.7% to go up. Really a success story.
Thank you.
Questions, comments, addition? Can I have a motion on the group health insurance?
I'll make a motion to approve the...
You can say so.
That's okay.
As presented. Group health insurance in the amount of, what, $13,199,91?
Yeah, second?
$13,371.
$13,371. $13 million, I'm sorry.
Right. And second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Last one, Kevin, is Department of Public Works, number four, or number 29 on the budget.
Next group of budgets, I'm going to turn over to Rick Stinson and his proof.
Oh, that just happened to walk in.
Before Kevin, Kevin goes away, this is the last set of budgets we're going to have. We will, we will come back on the final budget to talk about a position there. But Kevin's done, again, yeoman work in pulling this all together. You know, bringing the, bringing the whole town side in at a little over 3% is a great, great job, Kevin. So thank you.
A lot of people.
Kevin, thanks very much. Take the rest of the night on. Thank you. Nick and Joe, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. If I can, if I can ask one thing, there are people here that are waiting for our last article, Flanders Lane. And I don't know if you'd be willing to entertain taking them out of order?
We could, yes. We could do that, wrap to you? Sure. Thank you for the comment. Probably not necessary, but do you want to state your name and address in a way?
Sure. I'm Nick Stinson, Public Works Director, as you know, for Norway Street in Wakefield. I have with me my Assistant Director, Joe Conway, my Town Engineer, Bill Renault, and my Stormwater Manager, Claire Moss, who's back here.
Right behind you.
Okay. Thank you for taking this out of order. Flanders Lane is a combination of abetment and also street acceptance. The estimate for the project is $68,000. The project would, for whatever reason, and we have no idea what happened in the past, part of Flanders Lane is accepted, part of Flanders Lane is not accepted. That's this piece here. And there are four houses that have bought this piece of Flanders Lane. Happened back whenever the street was built, this portion was not part of the acceptance. So we've received a request from three of the four abutters for acceptance. One is opposed to it. And when we get a majority, the processes, we go to the advisory board to hear that process, work out kind of details before it gets to you. It's more of an informal process with the advisory board on this. Then when it comes to you, it's a, the formal process, the hearing process. The abutters, three out of the four have agreed, and I'm going to turn it over to Bill in a minute, but three out of the four have agreed to split the cost equally amongst all four, where normally it's done by footage of frontage on the road. The other thing we would be recommending is that payback be done over a 28-year period. Bylaw provides for, I believe it's five years. And with that, Bill, can you walk them through the presentation?
Sure, sure. So the proposal is to pave Flanders a 24-foot wide roadway for about 225 feet. That will also include installation of some new sidewalk on one side of the road and then also reinstalling sidewalk to meet ADA requirements. It also includes some, some new vertical curb to be installed as well. The proposal also is to have Flanders Lane, this section of Flanders Lane, accepted as a public roadway as well. So we're recommending that the article also include the acceptance provisions too, which would require the board to, or the council to refer it to the town's planning board.
And with that, any questions you have or anything? I believe you all received the PowerPoint in your package, so any questions you may have on that. We get these every, probably could have two or three a year, could have none for a couple of years. The benefit to street acceptance is that, well, first, the one thing that has to happen with street acceptance is it has to meet standards. So you have to do more than you would if you just paved it under abetment. The benefit of being accepted is in the future, they will not have to pay to redo the road or they don't have to worry about, the road gets so bad, we say, we can't plow it. We can't pick up trash on it because it'll damage equipment. So there are benefits to, and liability-wise, they're liable to the center of the road right now. They would not be in the future if it was accepted.
Okay. Questions, comments?
And you may, Mr. Chairman, want to hear from the abutters and...
Absolutely, sure. I'm sorry. Oh, you have two? Do you want to do it first? Hey, go ahead.
Rick, how does this compare with the Mount Pleasant project that we had just about a year or two ago?
Mount Pleasant project is similar. There were people that were, or one person who was opposed, I believe, to that project. We went forward and they pay their share of that roadway. The, I can't remember whether they agreed to split that equally or that was divided by frontage. I don't remember.
But that was also a 20-year term?
20-year term, correct, yes.
Then the other question I had was on the sidewalk improvements. Do we have like a standard going forward? Because I see right now it seems like it's, there's some asphalt here. Would the repaved sidewalk be asphalt? Is that concrete? Do we have a standard?
It's going to be asphalt as well.
Okay.
Yeah, we're keeping it consistent with the rest of Flanders Lane.
Okay.
So we're trying to match the width and, you know, and the curving as well. It's the same type.
The one thing that, and I think Bill mentioned it at the beginning, was that it does have to meet ADA requirements and also meet the width requirements that we require for a sidewalk.
Wider than what's pictured.
Yes.
Very much so, yeah.
It's a very narrow walking path, one foot at a time.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Okay. Do we have all four abutters here tonight or just one? Just two?
Three.
Three. Three out of four. Okay. Doesn't matter in the order who comes up. Okay, so we have three. Do you want to come up? We have room at the table or just maybe, if you have just one seat, as long as you have a microphone. Whoever wants to come up first, whatever order you want.
No, I don't want to go up there alone.
All three can come up. Yeah, all three.
You have a petition. So you start.
Welcome. Just, if you could state your name and address. I have most of the address down, but leave the number.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Tom Riley and I am on a butter at 23 Flanders Lane and have been in the town since 1980.
Bob Vincent, 22 Flanders Lane.
Joe Santoro, 197 Pleasant Street.
Okay, whoever wants to speak first is...
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the, as one of the, not the longest-lived member of the Flanders Lane crowd, Joe on my right here, Mr. Santoro is the longest-lived. I acquired the property in 1980 and in 1982 wished to pave my driveway. Had the then-town engineer come up, a very pleasant fellow, and he was telling me we were limited to 16 feet on the cut. And he was looking at where curbing ended, and I hadn't really understood why the curbing ended where it ended, the granite curbing. And he was all set to give me new curbing and finish off the edges of my driveway. And then because he's a town historian, he realized and recalled that that portion of Flanders Lane was not accepted. And after I picked myself up off the street, we have sort of wrestled with it over the decades. Mr. Santoro's mother, who was the neighbor at the time, came to me one day while I was young and busy and working. And she said, gee, I've got a contractor that'll at least repave this thing so that to get it in better shape than it's in. And I said, that's great. And I handed her some money and then I went off to work. And when I came home, the road had been paved, not to my driveway, but only to the Santoro's driveway. And that gentleman that did that work was long gone. So it's been 40 years in deterioration. I have with me here tonight, if you folks would like them, a petition signed by neighbors on Hancock Road and on Flanders Lane, encouraging adoption of this request, if the council would like it.
Sure. If you, do you have extra copies or...
We have our own copies back at the ranch.
Sure, that'd be great. Thank you.
Who would receive this?
Write to Chevy and we'll take it from there. Thank you.
We have it.
You have it?
We do. Yep.
I didn't think it had to be planned.
You have the petition that we filed for the process. This is a separate petition that we put together ourselves to ask our neighbors whether they, notwithstanding the fact they're not legally responsible for the private road the four abutters are, that they acquiesced in us doing this and that they avoid driving on that portion of Flanders Lane with much regularity because of the deteriorating conditions. So we thought it would be good to talk to our neighbors to get their feel for this process. This could inconvenience them because of the work. If this is accepted, that would be done on that portion of the road. As I said, I'm Bob Vincent. What I'd just like to say real briefly is this originates from the fact that Flanders Lane was private at one point in time. And in 1978, through a town warrant, most of Flanders Lane, but not all of Flanders Lane, became public. The remaining portion, which includes the four of us, remained private. I don't know the reasons why that remained private. As Tom indicated, it was repaved, or at least portions were, back in sometime in the early 1980s. Unfortunately, the way the law is right now, we can't get anything done but patching on that road. We do appreciate that the fact, the fact that the town plows the road, even though they're not legally required to do so. But we go out and patch it ourselves at times, besides asking the town to do some patching. And it's getting to the point where it's a lost cause for us. And the concern is that it will deteriorate to the point where either one, you'll cut off services to us, including trash, and two, that somebody's going to get hurt on that road. A child's going to run into a pothole, somebody's going to drive on there, and we are the ones that will be sued. And we are the ones that are legally responsible and liable if somebody does get hurt, as long as that remains a private road. Tom and I have the least amount of frontage. I mean, I'm somebody, I have 19% of the frontage. I've lived in the house four and a half years. My obligation in this process would be approximately $13,362. However, to be neighborly, I am more than willing to pay 25% of the overall cost, vice 19, upping my fiscal responsibility to $17,000. All four of us would pay a maximum of $17,000 since the estimated cost would be no more than $68,000 in the aggregate. So $17,000 a person. I'll answer any questions that you may have as well.
Questions, comments, anyone?
Yeah.
Joe Santoro, I just am opposed to the project. I've been there all my life. The road's not in any worse shape than it ever was. And most of the roads that are on either side and every other direction around there, everybody and their brother goes up and down that road. I don't know why, you know, all of a sudden, it's just such a liability. And the extent of the project, that $68,000 is just imposing a unacceptable financial burden on myself. I'm not in that kind of position to be able to, you know, pay for something like that. Getting close to retiring and I'm not like in a great position. So it's just a real hard, you know, financial situation to take on that. I mean, I've got bigger fish to fry, projects that need to be done on my own house that I have to keep putting off. And I have to spend that kind of money on something that I don't even need, want, or really care about. I mean, I don't care if they pave it, but I just, you know, like I say... I mean, I don't care if they pave it, but I just, you know, like I say, it's having that kind of burden, and financial burden imposed on me is unacceptable.
Further questions, comments from the town council?
Might be better directed at Rick, but so, than I'm understanding, Hancock Road, the rest of Flanders, and Pleasant are all town roads, though, right?
Correct.
So, we're talking about this kind of odd segment that is really connecting a lot of other town roads, but that segment in and of itself is private.
Correct.
But like folks, I mean, to travel from one town road to the next, you're passing over this.
You could...
Or potentially, right? Because you're coming from Pleasant to get into Flanders, you go this short section, then you get to Flanders, and... I guess, you know, one of the things that stands out to me is just like, from the public safety perspective, too, I'd have to imagine that there could be some concerns about deteriorating road conditions and emergency vehicles getting through, or emergency vehicles getting damaged. Is that...
It's always a concern, and if it became such an issue that was not safe to pass, I mean, police and fire are still gonna have to go down there. They could damage their equipment. We could also turn around and say, "We're not gonna plow that unless that's fixed." We'll pick up trash, you have to bring trash out to the beginning of the street, because there is no obligation to do any of those services on private ways.
Because then that would fall on these folks, though. I mean, I understand, the trash would be inconvenient, but the plowing would be a real cost for them going forward. So, when you're talking about this over a 20-year period, it's not as if that's, there's a zero cost associated with maintaining this, not to mention the kind of patching, which presumably you have to do, it sounds like a fool's errand at this point, but you're, what you're trying to do that road, so that's something... I think the bigger issue ultimately is, this is just a matter of having it as a warrant to go to town meeting. Like, we're not approving or allowing anything. All we're doing is just offering the mechanism by which you can then present the issue before the town, a town meeting, and then let the town vote on it, see what the town will do, right? So, I think from that standpoint, let that discussion and debate be had, but we're really just the gatekeepers to allow that to happen, so I don't see any reason why we wouldn't do that.
The one thing, if I can, that you do, their request is for not only the betterment, but acceptance. So, in order to do the acceptance piece, you have to send that to the planning board to review.
Once it's complete?
No, you can do it before.
And I believe as you approve the warrant, we're asking to repay over a period of 20 years, when the bylaw calls for five, although customarily, like, those allow folks to pay back over a period of 20 years. That would, I think that's a decision you have to make in order to prepare that warrant to go to town meeting. I will note that $17,000 paid back over the period of 20 years breaks down to $2 and change a day, that would, we would have to pay. The increase in our property taxes would be equivalent of $2 and change a day, allowing us to pay that $17,000 per person back over a 20-year period of time. That's one of the reasons we didn't go out and contract it ourselves, which we could do, because number one, we have to pay those people upfront, whatever contractor we use, and number two, all four of us would have to agree to that. And obviously, we're in a situation where all four of us don't agree to pay, so we had no choice but to come through the betterment process through the town.
And I think just to be, you know, for continuity purposes, if it was 20 years at Mount Pleasant, which I believe it was, it would seem that fairness would dictate that we would do, have the same terms for this project as well, which is somewhat...
We try to do, even though the bylaw says five, we always offer to the residents when they come in, it's 20 years, and then bring that to you when they indicated they wanted to do that.
Is that interest-free? Is that an interest-free 20 years?
No, it is. I know when you borrow, it's 2% over the borrowed rate.
So, for these Butters? Do they pay interest?
Yep.
No?
I can't remember. There might be...
They don't pay.
A certain percentage that's there. I have to, I don't have a lot...
Build into the estimate. Okay.
I know it's not a large percentage.
So, I think given the procedural nature of what we're talking about here, simply advancing to town meeting for further discussion and ultimately a vote, then I would move that we approve this warrant to go forward, the betterment and the other aspect would be...
Prefer the planning board with a 20-year term.
With a 20-year term.
Okay, do I have a second?
Seven.
All in favor? Five. All opposed? Seeing none? Just warrant. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for taking us out of turn.
Sure, sure. Thank you. That was all, thank Rick Stinson, Rick's idea. Right, saved in half hour, yeah. Thanks, Rick, that was a good comment. No interest. Okay, so, yeah, we'll check on that. We'll go back to eminent domain.
There's already two members missing.
Okay, Rick, if you wanna go back to one, eminent domain, I'll go back to that. No budget? Okay, right.
Which one are you gonna do first?
I guess we'll just, yeah, your budget, yeah.
Promise you, I will be done by 11:30.
Sorry about that.
No.
No, we won't, no, Paul won't approve it then.
Wanna try again?
Sorry, what then? So, number four, which is number 29, Department of Public Works, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The DPW budget that's before you is, has increased 3.15%, $183,513. And I'll discuss the key items that are in this budget that are important to recognize. First of all, uniforms and clothing, which you've seen in the memo, it has decreased The uniform allowance for the labor force is being moved into their wage rates, so it will appear there. So, we deducted out a portion of that amount, not the complete amount. The amount makes up a couple of things that's in the budget. One is that the supervisors' union has an amount in there which is not part of wages. The other portion is for safety clothing and for weather gear, and for different specialized equipment, such as coveralls when you go into sewer manholes and stuff like that. So, that all remains in the budget. But the decrease was $17,775. Training is up $7,200, and I can't tell you if that's a good number or not. We are now under OSHA and need to comply with that. There will be a lot of training that's going on. The first, actually, first part of it starts next week, which will be an OSHA 10 training for staff, and these classes aren't inexpensive. It also requires continuous training throughout the year on all kinds of items. So, we've added additional $7,200 through all of the budgets in the tax-supported side, and there was other money in the water and sewer side. The next component of that is safety equipment. Safety equipment, we've increased $8,250 through, as a total, and it goes to various budgets in the tax-supported side. That safety equipment, there's kind of two portions for safety equipment. One is the capital portion, which you'll see when capital outlay comes in, that provides shoring and breathing apparatus and other types of equipment that they need. This portion will cover, there are deadlines when you have to replace hot hats and safety glasses, air protection, respirator filters, that's what this item does. It's an annual, this is an annual item, where capital outlay is a one-time item. Software. Software throughout the tax-supported side has increased $22,700. A lot of our licenses have changed the way they're doing things, so you'll see, especially in the engineering budget, an increase there of $15,000. The majority of that is for our ESRI license and our AutoCAD license, and they've changed how they do their fee structures now. And then there's changes in the fleet maintenance program license and some other licenses, and there's some also in water and sewer. They're kind of just costs of doing business. The bigger items in here, there are two new positions in this budget, and one I will talk about first, which is, is the one in the engineering budget, which is a construction supervisor. This position will, or construction inspector, I'm sorry, not, I put supervisor, it should be inspector. This person will be out on the road inspecting, whether it be our trenches, our, from water and sewer or highway. Will also be inspecting work done by other utilities and contractors. The end goal of this is that this will either pay for itself or come close to paying for itself. There will be no net cost. We put it in the budget because it, when there are years that maybe it's not as high as it should be, it's covered and it's appropriated. But a good example is this year with the National Grid project, that project will pay $70,000 towards inspections, and I believe I have in here for this position is $65,000 and change. So, it's gonna be a big gain. The other gain is that in the long run, it will be, we will be able to provide a better roadway, better utility information, we'll also be able to reduce long-term costs, because that will know that things are inspected properly. Already, and so you know, this person's already on board, because we tried to gear up for the National Grid project. One of the things when they were installed, taking out the railroad tracks, they left a bunch of ties right around where the galvin school was, with upwards, with the spikes up in the air, and the kids were jumping over those. As part of his inspections, he picked that up pretty quick, and we got that resolved. But that's kind of one of the things that will happen with this. It'll also address safety. You know, contractors, as well as us, are required to do certain safety procedures on the roadway. This person will be monitoring that also, okay? Any questions on the construction inspector? The other position is contract, a contract administration supervisor. We do now more contracts than we've ever done, and if you look at public works going back to the 1980s, at one point, in the 80s, we had around 94 people. In the 90s, we had staff that was in the 80s. We also had, back in the 80s, there was a public works director, assistant director, and also an office manager. Over time, when the economy got tough, that shrunk down. But the other thing that happened was back in 1998, when the charter changed, and we ended up taking on a tremendous amount of responsibility for whether it be school grounds, school infrastructure on the buildings, other town buildings. We used to take care of probably eight or nine buildings, we now take care of 44. In the contracting piece, we now assist, whether it be the town administrator, the fire chief, when he puts out a bid for his pumper or an engine, the town clerk's office, we've assisted, we've been assisting a lot more people. One of the issues that came up and was real noticeable the last few years is that Carol Antonelli, who has retired, the position was supposed to be 50% inside, 50% outside, was actually spending 100% of the time inside, because you just can't do it all, you can't get it done. And the things that suffer are getting contracts out to do in a timely fashion. We were trying to contract out the Doyle School boiler and the Town Hall boiler, we had funding four years ago, we just finished that up. Also grants, there are a lot more grants that are coming about. This person will be involved in putting those together, and also monitoring the office staff. We take in probably 15 to 17 million dollars that comes in through what we bill out, and monitoring that and having a good handle on where that is is important. We don't spend the amount of time we should monitoring that, and so this will correct that. It's too important of an issue not to address. The other one I wanted to mention was under purchase of services. That, overall, that increased, part of it I've already discussed, that $180,000, $83,000 increase, $72,000 and change comes from purchase of services, part of which I mentioned. The other part is we're going to join DigSafe, which we are not a member, and I don't, anyone who, I don't know if you understand how DigSafe works, anybody can call into DigSafe. You don't have to be a member to do that. In order to get the information back, so you know where people dig and mock those out, they're supposed to call us. For water and sewer and drainage mockouts, that does not always happen, and things get done, and then they don't get patched properly, we don't know about it. So, $2,500, we're gonna get that information sent in to us, we'll go out and do our mockouts. We'll also be able to monitor, if you notice around town, Verizon will replace a pole. Poles, we generally don't get notified of at all, even when they do a DigSafe. So, you end up in a concrete sidewalk with a bituminous patch, and we want the concrete back. So, we'll have knowledge of that right away and be able to inspect that, and that's what the inspector will do. And then the other big one in purchase of services is in Park and Forestry for tree removal equipment, which is $20,000. We have always managed tree removals in-house, and if we needed larger equipment, we rent that equipment. Usually, we would get either zero or one takedown a year. That has multiplied quite a bit as trees get older. So, if you look at the budget this year, our professional service account under forestry and parks, we have expended $94,500 out of the $88,500 appropriated for that line item. And approximately $60,000 of that has gone to tree removal to assist us, where we don't have that type of equipment. So, this $20,000 will, and all we're doing is Robin Peter to pay Paul, so it just, we're taking from one thing over the other. So, we need to, we're looking to address that and put money where it should be, so we don't impact other things. Materials and supplies out of that $183,000 is up $40,000 and change. Vehicle fuel is up $5,558. That is an amount that is, if you remember, we do a five-year average on all of our energy stuff, and so, and then we just apply a rate that we think is appropriate for the coming year. We'll do some research on that, so it's up a small amount. And on general hardware and minor tools, we've increased that $5,000. We're going to have an electric vehicle that will come in for the traffic person downtown. We're looking to do a grant for two or three other electric vehicles. You need not only special tools, but special uniforms for that, and everything has to be coded. The uniforms have to be a certain, be able to protect you... The uniforms have to be a certain, be able to protect you from getting shocked. Some of the bigger tools, we don't know what that will entail yet. But my understanding is that some of our testing equipment won't work because it's not rated for that. So we'll find that out as we go and find out what's involved with that. Automotive supplies is up five thousand, based on just general cost increases that have been forecast. Parks, artificial rubber surfacing. We have four artificial fields, all of which are four, five years old. You need to, unfortunately, the rubber doesn't stay in place. I think many of you have had children who have come home with a lot of rubber. So it needs to be put back in order to keep the bounce factor in there, so someone doesn't get hurt. The first, this will do hopefully two fields. And the first one we would do would be landrigan, because if you remember, we plowed that once and we lost quite a bit of rubber up there. And so we won't plow them again. And it was a good experiment. But this will do two of the four fields and replace rubber in that. And this would be an ongoing thing, so the next year we would do two more fields. And finally, the last one I have here is the cemetery vaults for, we've increased that six thousand dollars. As you know, and when we've been here last year and the year before, we're building a cremation garden. And all of the costs coming back for the vaults will be paid back by, when someone's buried. The issue comes in, at wintertime. We, obviously, it's not easy to dig in the wintertime, especially when you have deep frost. So we, and this would, these are shallow grave sites, so it's even hotter because you're getting a part of the ground that's the hottest. So this would allow us to buy X number of vaults that we will put in the ground for wintertime only. And so that someone can come in, if they wanted to be cremated, they could. And they would go into one of those that were already set up. And with that, any questions you have on the public works portion of the budget?
Comments, questions? I think we're
Yeah, I mean, I'll just start. Thank you very much. I know a tremendous amount of work went into this. I spent some time with you last week and I'm very impressed by it. I think it's interesting, having just heard the workers' compensation budget, to see the increased emphasis on safety. I'm sure there are some direct correlations there. And definitely appreciate that. I'm particularly excited about the new contract and administrative supervisor. I think, I appreciate that there's so many contracts. I'm also coming to appreciate that there are many more grants, as you say. You know, as we talk about things like electrical vehicles and recycling and whatnot. And so I look forward to that person taking on a larger role with grant writing. Because I do think there are opportunities that we're probably not taking advantage of right now. Do you have somebody in mind for that position already?
No.
Okay.
It's a supervisory position, so it's under the supervisory union. I don't know if anyone in-house has that background or would apply. Because it covers more than public works. I know I have no one in-house. But it covers library staff, and I don't know, Steve knows better, who else it covers. So I don't know if they have that background or not. I don't know.
No, I just, I applaud you on, it's a big budget, and I am blown away by the amount of buildings and and just, you know, kind of being an energy person, the, just the data you have in terms of fuel use and electricity use is impressive, so thank you.
Keep moving.
Okay. Do you want to vote, please? I will, I will say one thing, because I know Kevin's, Kevin back there?
Yep.
The, there's an amount that, do you have the wording, Kevin? I want you. Come on, I have the page. Okay. Got one there. So the motion would be total budget, the, well, the total budget request is six million eight thousand two hundred and one dollars, with five million nine hundred thirty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars coming from tax levy, and seventy-one thousand seventy dollars coming from available fund transfers, thirty-seven thousand sixty-six dollars, which comes from perpetual care income, four dollars from the park trust fund, and thirty-four thousand dollars from the sale of cemetery lots.
Okay. Using that information, can we have a motion?
So moved.
Sherry marked it down, Paul seconded it.
I have full confidence that she got it.
Good, excellent. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five-zero, none opposed. Thank you both.
Thank you. What's the next one? Snow and Ice the next?
Snow and Ice.
Snow and Ice. Request is for eight hundred fifty thousand dollars, of which fifty thousand dollars. It's a fifty thousand dollar increase, fifty thousand dollar increase. The realistic budget for snow and ice that we calculate every year is one million two hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars. I don't ever recommend that you get to the full amount, but you need to get close. And I've given you some history on expenses of what we spend each year and why you want to get up there. Because otherwise, it all goes on to next year's tax levy. And you don't want to have that big amount going on there. Last year, we put a portion of it on this current year's tax levy, when we went over the eight hundred thousand dollars, or seven, eight hundred last year. The one of the keys to snow and ice, and people probably don't realize it, and you can see the formula we have, we basically have twenty-seven operations planned for in the budget between plowing and salt, based on an average winter. We're actually already at twenty-two times we've been out this year. With twenty-two being this past Sunday. And I can't, we're putting numbers together now. We keep pretty tight track of where we are. We're trying to finalize those to see whether we're, we're pretty close. We may even be over. And I could be back here this year for a reserve fund, or overdraft for that. Yeah, afraid so.
Is Kevin okay?
Kevin, no, he fell, he fell, he fell. The, so, and we still have three or four more weeks of winter. So it has snowed in April and June and May, so. So recommend that you go up another fifty thousand dollars. And so we get closer. My thought is a million dollars is probably the number you want to be at at some point. Realize you can't get there all at once. But when you look at the chart I give you under that second snow and ice section, the, last year, we spent the million seventy-four thousand. Year before, nine forty-five. A year before was a down year, was six hundred thirty-four thousand. A year before was one point eight million. A year before was nine fifty-three. For that, seven ninety-nine. So that's kind of where we are. You get a unique year in there where we don't. This year is probably just as expensive as others, because even though it was black ice, sometimes it's cheaper to plow than it is to try to treat black ice with salt.
Questions, comments on that? It's a lot to take in.
I know that each year we've been creeping up, right? So I think we've been doing it in what, fifty thousand increments, right? Because I think we're at what, seven fifty, then went to eight hundred, eight fifty, is what's being proposed now by Steve. It seems that the eight fifty, I think that this year makes sense.
I think, I'm comfortable with it. We've tried to move up. I mean, it was not too long ago, ten years ago, we were at two ninety-three. So we've been that was maybe a little bit crazy.
Right. As much as I understand it, one point two, three, four million?
Right. Well, it was the budget request. I mean, if you look at the expenditures on the far right of that request, have been, I think that the director is right. At some point, you know, in the next few years, getting to a million seems like a good, solid number to handle any of the, you know, craziness that comes there. Because when we do have a year that there's a one point eight million, there is a bit of money that comes in that helps too, at the end of the day. But I think a million is a good, solid amount. That we need to get to at some point.
To your point, Rick, I mean, it's, the money comes from somewhere regardless. So if we're not budgeting true to what the actual expenditures are for us, we're just taking it from other sources. It's not as if this is an expenditure we don't have otherwise, but for. So I think the more we can be kind of trued up to our, to the actual need in these budget line items, I think it makes a lot more practical sense for us. I know we're not there yet historically, but at least we're trending in that direction, to Steve's point. We've come a long way, it sounds like, in recent years on that.
And we're not the only town around that took that approach. I mean, just about every town in the Commonwealth did the same. A lot of them have corrected that, like we're trying to. There are some that still do that. I mean, if you look back at the history for twenty years, we budgeted a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars and didn't increase anything. And costs were always going up. And then for another ten years, we did two hundred fifty thousand dollars, way back. And when you go into the seventies and the, in the eighties, so. You know, we've made a lot of progress in the last, you know, six, seven, eight years.
Okay, so I think we need a motion on
Eight hundred fifty thousand.
Eight hundred fifty thousand, right, so.
I move that we approve the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the snow and ice budget.
Second.
I think it's the right number as well, right, for this year? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, or none?
Thank you. The sewer budget, the request is for eight million, six hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars, six hundred twenty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. It is an increase of three hundred and eighty thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars, of which three hundred and three thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars represents the MWRA increase. The MWRA assessment is increased in this budget, it's increased, oh, where am I? Or represents seventy-seven percent of this budget, the MWRA does. The, when you look at the increase, our portion of the increase is less than one percent. The rest of it all belongs to the MWRA. The biggest increase that we have are the Schedule VII obligations, which are general insurance, health insurance, retirement, those types of items. There's no new employees in this budget. There are contracted step increases as part of this budget. And there are overtime, there's not additional hours, but there are changes to overtime based on the rate, when you recalculate the rate for the, for raises. Seasonal employees, we reduced a half person in this budget and in water. It represents eighty-three hundred dollars, eighty-three hundred and twenty dollars in each budget. Police details, we decreased two thousand dollars on the suicide. Generally, we don't end up with a lot of police details on the suicide. In the last few years, we've actually been fortunate, we've been at zero. The purchase of services increased thirty-seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars, two thousand of which is related to software licenses. The rest are minor increases. And sewer materials and supplies decreased twenty-one hundred and seventy-four dollars. And maturing debt decreased twelve hundred and thirty dollars.
Okay, questions, comments? Okay, all in favor of, sorry, have a motion on this portion of the budget?
I motion that we approve, sorry, eight million six hundred twenty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty dollars for the sewer division budget.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Hearing none, five-zero? Okay, Rick.
Okay, the last budget. Request for the water budget is five million five hundred and eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. The increase is five hundred fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars. The MWRA water assessment represents four hundred and thirty-two thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars of that five hundred and fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollar increase. We pumped a lot more water, it was a hot summer last year. We pumped a lot more water than we have in a number of quite a few years. And that shows here, because your your rate, your assessment, and it's a preliminary assessment right now, so you'll know. So between now and June thirtieth, the assessment on the waterside and the suicide could go up, it could go down. Generally, they go down, but that has not always been the case. I think it will go down this year, but the, we won't know till June, when they vote their final rates. So this rate is is high, there's no question about it. It's, our, our assessment for the year is based on last year's water consumption. So it's based on calendar year two thousand eighteen. And so they're using that to base the assessment. Next year, it could be completely the opposite, and it could go down or stay the same. Hopefully, it'll go down. The budget increase without the MWRA water assessment for our portion is two point five two three percent. And the MWRA represents forty-six and a third percent of this budget. Biggest increases here for, on the town side, the Schedule VII obligations, which represent thirty-six thousand dollars. Debt service, which represents seventy-eight thousand dollars. And that will level off. The debt service is based on the water main project we approved last year, the four million dollar borrowing. And we're trying to balance that out. So pretty soon, the treatment plant's going to come off in a couple of years. That'll drop a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars out of debt. And there's a bunch of other debt items that will be coming off. So that will have a positive effect on lowering the debt. There are contracted step increases, overtime, similar situation. The seasonal employee half person that dropped eighty-three hundred and twenty dollars. On our purchase of services, it's down six thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars. And our materials and supplies are down eight hundred, eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Okay, questions, comments on the water portion?
Rick, do we have some sort of unique, it's like a unique inverse relationship in that if you don't use enough water, then it actually ends up being more expensive, right? There was some, there's some sort of
That's, yeah, it's true. It's a catch-22.
Yeah.
It's like any product. The more you sell, the cheaper it is. And, but then it impacts, you know, how much water you have. So unlike products you can produce, you may not be able to produce all the water you want. We are actually in, the MWRA is in better shape than it's ever been. Because they made some substantial cutbacks on consumption. Back in the late eighties, early nineties, we were pumping over a billion gallons a year. The past few years, we've been between six hundred and twenty million and six hundred and sixty million. Last year, we were over seven hundred and ten, twenty million. So it's gone up a little bit. But overall, everybody's way down on what they pump and use. And that just drives up the cost of, because it's not getting cheaper to treat water or take care of water.
Okay, any further comments on water? Okay, any further comments on water? Guess not, okay. Can I have a motion on the, uh, water portion of the budget?
I move that we approve $5,589,995,000 for the water division budget.
Thank you, Julie. Second. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, five, zero, thank you.
Uh, eminent domain is an annual article for $1, and lets us take easements for, um, and for construction purposes. Um, so we recommend $1.
There's gonna be a lot of questions on this. Seriously, no. Kind of a motion on the eminent domain article for a dollar? Second, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Hearing none? Your favorite and my favorite?
Which one? I got two.
Roadway improvements.
Roadway improvements. Um, and so you'll know, all of these articles were, um, authorized by the advisory board to come before you. Um, the request is for $1 million. Uh, roadway funding, um, that's needed, uh, every year is, right now, it's set as $2, $2.1 million in order to, uh, we, to pave six miles of road. Um, that's calculated, we have 90 miles of public road. Divide that by a 15-year life expectancy, that comes out to six miles a year. This year's Chapter 90 amount, um, and you'll see in one of the charts I have, I put it in italics, but it's, I had carried last year's because I didn't know it at the time. Uh, we did get that number. It's $673,616. Chapter 90 is gonna fund about 32% of the roadway need, uh, in the coming year. Uh, a million dollars would provide, uh, 2.86 miles of road, or about 15,100 feet. Additional 1.43 miles of road above last year's $500,000, that was appropriated. The, in the early nineties, Chapter 90 used to cover, uh, the two, the six miles completely. And I can tell you that in 1995, Chapter 90 money was $506,000. Uh, so it hasn't increased in 23 years a whole lot. Um, and the costs have gone up substantially. Fiscal year 2002, that amount was cut $174,000 for the town. Uh, then it's been getting back up to where it should be. So now we're at $673,000. The roads that we're looking at, um, right now, we'll be finalizing pretty soon. Uh, Lowell Street from Walden Road to Vernon, Pleasant Street, um, Water Street from Butler, Ave to the Bridge, not Bu- uh, Rosemary, I'm sorry. Um, I believe Rosemary to the Bridge. Richardson Street, Jefferson to Melvin, and, uh, White Circle, Collins Road are some of the ones we're looking at. Uh, if we were to do Pleasant Street, um, we probably couldn't afford to do the entire length. It would take up a huge amount of the money. So whether we do all that and not the others, or we kind of break it up, we're looking at all that right now.
Is that based on the million dollars, Rick? Is that?
Based on the 66673.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, questions, comments? Paul?
There's certain things that I will sit back and I'll let you have free rein, because I know you're doing your best. When we get to this part here, I have a ton of questions. Uh, roadway improvements, sir. How many roads right now are out there that the municipal light and gas department is not ready for us to pave the road? And what streets are they?
In, in short answer, there's a lot. They have a whole list of gas main that they need to replace. That, because they classify leaks as one, two, three. Um, and the severe ones, they do immediately. The next group, they have to do in a certain timeframe. The other ones, they can monitor. And so they're trying to replace all the BS steel, cast iron, pipe in the system. Um, but it takes time. Right now, they're gonna work on Main Street this year from Carriage Lane down to, what street do you remember?
Salem Street.
Salem Street. And then they're gonna do, uh, uh, Madison Ave, uh, no, Pine Stone, Madison Ave, Grafton, a portion of, not Grafton, Pittman Ave. They have, um, a couple of streets off the square they're working on.
But that doesn't address the ones that we've been waiting for, for the last four, maybe five years. So you already touched on Pleasant Street. We've been waiting for them for a long time to do Pleasant Street over. Emerson's another one in, in the, on the west side. Okay, that's a nightmare. That, that's a disaster, that street. And that's a public way. And we're waiting, and waiting, waiting. I mean, we, how long are we going to wait for the light department to catch up to us? Are they not budgeted for it? Is there, is, are there any reasons that we know of that are delaying them from doing the roads?
Um, uh, under DPU regulations, they have to do so many miles a year. Um, and I don't know what that mileage is, but they do have a certain amount of mileage they have to do. Um, they also have a set limit on a budget, and I can't tell you what that is. You'd have to ask them.
So continue on roadway improvements. Mr. Mayor, last year, we came in with an initial request of what, $450? And at town meeting, it went up to $500? Or was it $350?
I wonder if it was $250 or $350.
Three fifty.
Three fifty. The town meeting raised it to $500,000.
So, so right now, you're taking in, and you're doubling that to a, a million. Um, though I'd love to give you 10 million, I think a million's excessive at this point. I'd be more comfortable at $850,000, to be honest with you. Um, if they wanna raise it at a town meeting, all well and good, but I, I, I think to go from $500,000 to a million is a great recommendation from the advisory board. I mean, I, I, I'm just not sure if, see, what was your number for that?
Mine was $500,000.
Okay, so I, I'm not even gonna go with the $500,000. Um, it, it's just something for the-
In, in my head, my heart is moving.
It, it's something for discussion from this board.
I want that to be clear.
Do we go up to the full million? Do we double the amount from last year to a million? Um, I, I'm more concerned that the light department's not keeping up with us and, and, uh, holding us back on roads that are in dire need of some tender loving care, and people, I don't know how, what more. Who do I send these people to that c- contacting me from Emerson about getting that road done? I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's a mess.
No, I, I don't disagree with you.
Okay, so I mean, so who do I direct them to? I, I, at this point, I mean, I don't know what, what to tell them as far as the, they're paying taxes and the road is a disaster.
And, and they, and we've had some real good discussions with the light department, how important it is for them to, when they start a street, one of the things they used to do was they would put in the gas main and leave it as dead main until they had time to do the services. They've kind of working to change that approach. And I think you will see the whole process speed up. Um, and, um, the, because what my concern and fear is, and we've expressed that to them, is you take Main Street. The longer I let that go, my cost increase to redo that. Because maybe instead of just doing a cold plane and overlay, I have to turn around and basically rebuild the street and remove all the hot top, which drives up our cost. Uh, and we've had good discussions with them on that to, so we can try to avoid that as we move forward.
So, so let me, again, I wanna make myself clear though on this. I, I'm not bashing the light department, okay? That's the furthest thing from my mind. But certain areas in the town can't be neglected, and then we don't bother with them year after year. So we're doing Main Street now, we're gonna do part of Pleasant, okay? You, you're doing Lowell Street, Water, Richardson. I'm just, wh- wh- where does Emerson fit to this picture?
Uh, it's not in this year. Okay. Um, I, I, I will say this too, and this is from experience. They need to do their work because, uh, years ago, they had one of those mains, this goes back probably in the early 2000s, uh, the section on Lowell Street between the intersection at Vernon down over the railroad tracks. Uh, they indicated to us that it was okay to pave. It had leaks which we did not know about, that were in the lower class. Uh, we went in and coldplaned that road, and the vibration, guess what? Brought that up to the top. All of a sudden, we're ready to pave, we have it coldplanned, and they say, you can't pave that. So we need them to be ahead of us.
Okay, I've said my two cents on roadway improvements.
The, the street and roads, definitely, we have, um, as, as Paul mentioned, we would like 10 million for this, but it's not practical. Certainly, there's a lot of phone calls we're all getting, or we're just hitting the holes ourselves, um, all over town. Keeping with the budget, I mean, my reference was, uh, I had marked down 750. Steve had 500, but I think we have to have more. I'm not sure what the number is, but my suggestion is to 50% more in the Cs, and then let the town meeting decide. But I was thinking 750 was the number budget-wise, but I think we still can afford. Ed?
I think one of the things that I would like to see with this is, you know, we, we kind of like talking about roads that need to be done. If there was a way that we had some better visuals, like a map, where say they were color-coded, like this is like red, like Emerson, for example. This is, this is yellow, this is green. And I know that you, there's a lot of mapping, uh, Rick, that you do, but having the visual to kind of see your kind of townwide, these are the problem spots, I think would help me feel more comfortable about, about the numbers, and probably the, the town as a whole at town meeting have a better understanding of what we're talking about. I mean, I know we all drive roads every day. I know, you know, everyone wants, you know, everyone wants a lot of money for schools, you want a lot of money for roads. I, I understand that. There are a lot of priorities within the town. But understanding, you know, kind of, kind of being able to pinpoint, and then feel like we have a, a longer range, plan going forward relative to that, I think would be really helpful to kind of understand, okay, this is, an investment of this gets, yields us this, and this is what we're looking at longer term. Because if we have, for example, you know, um, I don't know, four miles of red, and we're only funding a quarter of that, then it's very easy to see, okay, that's probably not, not aligned funding.
Yeah, we actually have a pavement management system that puts an index on all of them. Um, and we refer to that. But a lot of the referring to that, then you have to look at what gas work has to be done, what water work has to be done, sewer drainage. And so we take that, and then we work into streets that we know we can do. Uh, but we update that every year. And, uh, and look at that. And it's, it's a, probably about this thick, it covers every road in town, even some of the private ways we have on there. So we know what kind of condition, even though we don't pave them, we know what condition they're in.
I, I think if, from my perspective, if we were to say, come, come into town meeting at $500,000, have that information publicly accessible so people can understand it, and then at town meeting, have a more robust discussion about it based upon that, then the town may in fact want to go up from the $500,000. But as a starting point, I would feel more comfortable with that, and then let the details kind of fill in, you know, as people become more informed about how, how severe, you know, these issues are. That, to me, feels like a comfortable starting point and, and a springboard from there.
One thing we do have with the light department, um, and, and they've been really good to work with, we've had some good conversations about formalizing this process over the last six, uh, three or four months anyway, is that they do have sections where they are doing the gas, and there is a schedule. Sometimes things happen, you know, something gets more critical. But, uh, and I forget where Emerson is on that. Do you remember? I don't remember where Emerson is on their schedule off the top of my head. But we'll have to look at that, but there is-
I know there is talk of it, I just don't remember where it is.
So that is, that working with Rick's man, we're trying to do to say, hey, we're doing all these here, then we can, and finish that up completely, so then we can go in and, and pave. So we are moving in that direction.
Julie.
I just have a point of information. So we have, you know, a number of items on here, you know, that range from a million to, you know, $500,000. How do all of these play together? I mean, we can't approve all of these. So do we talk about all of them, and then, you know, see how we allocate it? How does this fit in with the budget that we, other budgets? Like, how does this play in the big picture?
Uh, when I give the big budget picture in the beginning of the year, like where I think we're gonna be, okay? Uh, I look at where I think the articles will be. And it was around in the two, two and a half million dollar range. So there are always additions that come there, and they're one-offs. I mean, we're not gonna do, next week, we're gonna talk about Blattsfield. We're not gonna do Blattsfield again. So that, I get that there's one-offs, and, and we do have, um, you know, we do have, thank God, some good reserves right now, that we would just use more free cash to cover those things. Roads are something that's a little ongoing. It's an ongoing issue. I think, uh, I think it's great that we're even putting more money into roads. Many communities can't do that, they're just going with Chapter 90, and they're not getting there. Although most, a lot of them now are saying, Chapter 90's not catching up, so they've gotta do it. So all of these, these together, we put them all in, against the backdrop that I don't know what new growth is gonna be. We won't know that until August, although we have a, we have an idea of where we're gonna be. And we don't know where, um, uh, the state budget is at this point.
Right.
It makes it a little bit difficult. But I think for the last 10 years, we've tried to say, all right, you know, here's where I think we are at the beginning of the year, we have that PowerPoint, uh, and in that area, we were great. And if not, we use a little bit more reserves, in my opinion. But we're not-
So approving some of these is not necessarily-
No, and, and not necessarily, um, yeah, exactly.
Negating other things.
Negating anything. The other thing is, is that if we found out that did, let's say that the, um, uh, market crashed and state aid crashed, which has happened before. You know, you get a letter from the governor, you know, it's a lovely letter, you get it, and, and it says, by the way, uh, we, we did, we told you we're gonna give you 10 million, seven in state aid. Yeah, we're gonna knock that down to 9 million. And having been there, that happens. We can't do all this work, okay? So technically, we don't have to expend it. We would come back and maybe cut budgets and do that. We've done that before, so.
Okay.
It's kind of a, you know, it's, you know, moving targets for us.
And the Chapter 90, I think there is, I mean, maybe Steve, this is something to follow up with MMA. I think there is some discussion over going multi-year on Chapter 90 versus one year.
We've been asking the, uh, state government to, um, move Chapter 90 to 300, 300 million.
300, yeah.
Right.
300 million. They've been coming with 200 million. There was one year where they did kind of overlap, although we got it late. It was all right, because we still got it. So, you know, that would be, increase that by a third. But that, I don't think that's in the cards this year. I haven't heard anything.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like it's positive. But certainly, multi-year would help us with planning.
This current year that we're in, we received an extra 100 and something and change. That's, but that was, came out of the blue. They, at the end of the year, they said, we got extra money, here you go.
Which was nice, which was great, and we'll use it, but it wasn't a planning, wasn't part of our planning process.
Thank you for the education on that. Thank you.
So Rick, to Ed's point, is that possible to have some kind of a red, green, yellow kind of a map for the,
Well, what we, what we can do is, we can do an index map.
Okay.
That's, uh, and, cause the index says, here's your rating on a road, and here's what you should be doing, and as it drops, your, your costs are increasing because you have to do more.
In conjunction with the gas and light work, so that obviously-
Yeah, I, I mean, I can tell you what they're doing for this year for gas work, and what they have planned for the next three years. Uh, however, that could change depending on if gas leaks get worse. So that could change.
But even the main focus, I guess, being on the, the red, as Ed was pointing, I think it's a good baseline to have. So we know what we're voting on.
I think it's an informed decision, because I mean, maybe that, maybe more appropriate, that $2 million is discussed next year. You know, as, as an example, because to your point, the more road deteriorates, the more expensive it becomes. So we need to be mindful of that balance as well. It's not just a matter of having nice roads. You know, it's, it's a matter of understanding that as they get worse, it's kind of like, you know, with healthcare. As, as someone gets more sick, it becomes more costly. The same idea with our roads here, which I think is something that we haven't necessarily focused on to date, but it's an important aspect of all of these discussions, because we end up spending more to do the same thing ultimately.
Right.
But I would feel comfortable with the $500,000 with the understanding that this is publicly accessible information for folks to have, and then have the discussion, the robust discussion at town meeting, and then from there, um, the town may go more than that. But I think 500 seems like a reasonable entry point for this discussion.
Any comments on that? Do you want to have a motion for a number at this point to put on the, uh?
I can make a motion.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
So I, I would make a motion that we, um, have as a warrant article roadway improvements, uh, of $500,000 for the most critical roads, um, as identified by DPW, working in conjunction with gas and light.
We have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of the five hundred thousand for the roadway improvements? Okay, five zero, so we'll use five hundred for now, and then, uh, town meeting can decide ultimately as usual. Thanks.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, the next one is sidewalks. Um, request is for a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, towns funded new sidewalk installations from nineteen ninety-five to two thousand two. Uh, those amounts varied anyways from fifty thousand up to a hundred and fifty thousand. Um, it, the, and then it stopped, and then in, uh, two thousand thirteen, we began doing new sidewalks again. And these are not repairs, these are brand new installs, uh, through, uh, this past year. Uh, look, this current year, a hundred thousand was appropriated. Um, the project that is outlined, the estimate's a hundred twenty-five thousand. And Bill, do you want to talk about that a little bit, what, the project you have?
Sure, so, yeah, so we have, um, uh, basically, it's a bunch of infills in certain sections where we have sidewalks around. So we're looking, uh, Vernon Street's one area, um, we have some sidewalk that we're looking to do, um, near Cordis, that'll kind of tie in that, um, that, that sidewalk network, and a few other little smaller scattered pieces that also, um, not just necessarily sidewalk, um, extensions, but also, um, accessibility enhancements too. So, um, certain intersections that may have, uh, curbing that's there and no curb ramps, so those will also be kind of infilled as part of that, um, one hundred and twenty-five thousand.
How much sidewalk does that hundred and twenty-five thousand represent? How, how far does that go, I guess? Is, your comparison with the roads before with six miles?
It's a little different with, it's, it's actually kind of interesting, because of the, the town has obligations to, as we're touching, um, roadways, or if we're touching sidewalks, that we have to make it, um, ADA accessible as well. So those ramps end up being a major component of it, so it's really doesn't, you, you can't really equate it as easily to a linear foot cost. Um, in our plan right now, we have about a half a mile is what we're gonna get out of that, but a series of ramps that'll go with it. And there's the ramp cost that, those cost somewhere between, depending on the limits of what we have to do, it can go, um, from three thousand dollars per ramp, um, all, up to almost, uh, seven thousand dollars a ramp. So that, um, it all really based on the, the condition of, uh, and, and the grading that's in that area, so.
Also, the expertise, don't you usually subcontract that out for the ADA portion? Usually you don't do that yourselves, right?
Yeah, the, this, this project itself will be all, because it's new sidewalks and, and being excavated and whatnot, and all that's gonna be, um, a subcontract, subcontracted out.
Okay.
Uh, the, our group will design it internally, but we will subcontract the work out.
Okay. Okay, questions, comments on sidewalks? Julie?
Um, so I understand we didn't get complete street funding this year. Um, how does that, I mean, are these sidewalks that might have been done under that funding, or are they in addition to that?
In addition, in addition, we're leaving those.
So we can reapply next year for complete streets and perhaps cover more?
Right, and we've, what we've done, because of the tight timeframe on that, that program, uh, we've already actually done the survey, and we're in the process of actually starting the design for that, but unfortunately, once we found it, we weren't getting the funding, we, we pulled back on that work, so.
Okay, do we have any numbers in mind to, here, any motion?
I'll make a motion that we authorize the hundred and twenty-five thousand as recommended, um, an item three.
Okay, do we have a second? Second. Okay, all in favor of the one hundred and twenty-five thousand sidewalk improvements?
Aye.
Five zero. And opposed, thank you very much. Again, ultimately, the town meeting will decide.
Yes.
Steve's budget.
Uh, the revolving fund bylaw, um, last year, the revolving fund bylaw was authorized by town meeting, and that was for, um, the, uh, life cycle maintenance fee on roadways. Um, this request is to add a section for, um, in the article would update section, uh, five D of the current bylaw, uh, to include equipment auctions. Um, person, the purpose of it is to ma, to obtain the maximum value for the surplus equipment. Um, auctioning in, in many cases, if not all, provides a higher value than if we trade the vehicle in. Uh, but there are some issues with the two approaches. Uh, currently, we've traded, uh, up until the recent auctions, we've traded all of our vehicles. Um, and, uh, the, uh, the number we provide to the capital planning committee for the vehicles includes an estimated trade value, um, and, and remember that when I said that. So if it's a fifty thousand dollar vehicle, um, and we estimate that we're gonna get twenty-five hundred, we ask for forty-seven five. Um, the, uh, number that, um, i- if we use the auction method right now, under the current setup, the funding that comes from the auction goes into the general fund, and would not be there to offset the cost of the equipment. So instead of asking for the forty-seven five, we would ask for fifty thousand dollars from the capital planning committee. Um, and if, but by using the auction method and having it go into a revolving fund, we would use that money as the offset, the trade in value. So if we were to get five thousand dollars for a piece of equipment, that would lower that cost of, to forty-five thousand. Um, and we could put that auction money towards that, and it would reduce the request of even more that would go to the capital planning committee. Um, so we recommend this approach, the auction in, in general, a, a couple examples. Um, uh, first of all, we, um, so far, we have not auctioned all the items, because we're spreading them out, so it doesn't just appear that it's a wholesale thing out there, take whatever you want. Uh, we've brought in sixteen thousand five hundred dollars approximately. Um, one example is that, um, we had a plow that was there that was surplus. Um, when we put it, um, up to be traded with the truck, um, the truck, and I can't remember what the value was, but say it was five thousand dollars they were gonna give us, and we, at the time, we said, what if we keep the plow, because we could use that as a spare? What would it do? It says, we'll still give you the five thousand dollars, it didn't change. We ended up getting about sixteen hundred dollars for that plow, in addition. That's kind of one of the examples, and, and so some of the older, um, equipment, we had, uh, a Seacod snow blower that was sitting around, when we bought the two new snow blowers, we have the attachments, uh, we wanted to trade that. We received no, um, uh, amounts given for the trade, um, but we were able to sell it at auction for six thousand dollars. So that's some of the things that are benefiting us, bringing some money back in, um, and, but we want to put that towards reducing the cost of the vehicle.
Okay, questions, comments on revolving funds?
It's a better approach.
No, it's, it's a great approach, absolutely.
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, please, if you have a motion.
Let's make a motion to add as a warrant, um, article revolving funds DPW auction equipment as described by Director Stinson. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Got opposed? Thank you.
Um, the next article is the revolving fund limits. If you remember from last year, this is the second part of the revolving fund. Um, and you have to each fiscal year set the amount, uh, that you can spend out of that revolving fund. If it doesn't get spent, it stays in the revolving fund for other purposes. Um, we're recommending fifty thousand dollars, if we didn't raise that much, you can't spend that much. And, um, if you, um, raised seventy-five thousand, the twenty-five thousand's gonna sit there, and then it would come up with the following year.
Okay, questions, comments? Kind of a motion on that one, for roadways and DPW equipment? Revolving amounts.
Make a motion for the revolving funds, uh, amounts limit as described by Director Stinson for roadways and DPW equipment.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, Grafton Street drainage, um, and I don't know if everyone remembers, but back, um, a number of years ago, and it was finished in two thousand sixteen, we did a drainage study for the town, and we focused on, uh, some key areas. The amount, um, that came out of the report, and there were, uh, about twelve areas that we focused on. The amount that came out of the report in two thousand sixteen dollars was fifty-four million dollars of work that needed to be done. We've taken on one project, uh, which has been a challenge, New Salem Street, um, because of the river being higher than the, the pipe, and how do you solve that? That's been, uh, interesting challenge. Um, the, the one though that we have here is Grafton Street. Um, Grafton Street, um, uh, impacts the neighbors when that does flood. Um, it, um, will impact houses, will flood out the roadway, um, and we've done most of the design for that project, but the estimated cost is one million three hundred fifty thousand dollars, which we recommend borrowing for. Um, the, some of the issues, the, uh, pipe is, uh, in inadequate capacity, it's a twenty-four inch pipe, um, and this would increase it to either thirty-six or forty-eight inches. Um, the, uh, this, on, um, uh, storm wise, uh, some of the other issues is the depression, it's like a bowl in the back which impacts the area. Um, the culvert that it comes out of at Harrison and Grafton is, um, undersized and could be increased. Um, the, uh, the pipe itself in Grafton Streets in poor condition, the drainage pipe, it needs to be upgraded. Um, the, as you go downstream, there's some blockages and growth all through that area that need to be, uh, addressed, um, and taken out of where the, all the water flows as it goes into Melrose. Um, storm wise, and, and this is pretty interesting that, um, and it only becomes an issue when it rains. Other than that, no one cares about drainage, unfortunately, uh, except for us. Um, the, um, the, the catch basin surcharge is what happens on Grafton Street too, because of the, you just can't get the water downstream. Um, the, uh, and it doesn't take much, I'm looking for the chart here that had the numbers, um, which is a, what do I do with it? So a, uh, two-year storm, so it only takes three point two five inches of rain at one time to turn around and, and flood that out. Um, and then when you go to, when you start getting over five inches of rain, um, which we don't have happen a whole lot, thank God, uh, but when you do, then it's a real problem down there. And it's probably flooded out in the past ten years, um, I bet you half dozen to ten times, um, so it's, it's not a lot, but it creates a lot of damage property wise. Um, and as we try to improve our drainage, and it's not the only area, um, but it's one of the areas we can do a quick fix on. Is it gonna solve the entire problem? No, unless we can fix downstream, which is more than us. When you go into Melrose and go farther down, um, then that's the only way you're gonna fix the entire problem.
Okay, questions, comments on that? Paul?
So, Rick, is this an inherent problem from runoff coming off of Kendricks to Harrison? That neighborhood, or is it coming off of the new, um, newer part of Harrison to the right coming down to Grafton?
I- it's both.
And the pipe that you're referring to is from the, 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 the portion that goes from Kendricks underneath Grafton down Maple?
Yeah, it goes from Kendrick, goes beha, goes between Kingmont and Essex, between Norway and Essex, and then it goes in the backyard of a house and goes out to Harrison, uh, where Harrison meets Grafton Street. Um, and then it will flood down to, what's the first street on the left, uh?
Maple.
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 And Maple Street will flood as you go down Maple Street.
And then Maple, when Maple, when water heads to Maple, that's heading to Melrose at that point.
Right.
So, so the, that's been an age old problem.
Yeah, uh, years ago, yeah, before all the development, um, the pipes always was size too small. But before all the development, it was never a problem. Yeah, so, and that development goes back, I don't know when, the Kendrick area, but that's gotta be in the eight seventies, eighties, and Harrison goes back into the nineties, I think. Is that right? I believe, or late nineties?
Kendricks was done, Kendricks was done early nineties, the new Harrison was done
Ninety-eight, ninety-nine.
when I was on the planning board, so. What's that, twelve years ago? Fifteen years ago? Um, it, it, it says here borrowing, Steve, explain, can you explain the borrowing side of that?
That we would bond that out.
Bond it out.
Over probably a ten-year period.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion on the Grafton Street drainage?
I'll make a motion that we, um, approve the expenditure of one million three hundred fifty thousand dollars in order to address the Grafton Street drainage issue.
Thank you, Paul, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, five zero. Okay, CNN Salt Facility Engineering.
Um, the, uh, salt sheds which are at, um, Nahon Street Yardway site, um, are basically ready to fall down and, uh, aren't the safest facilities in the world. Um, and they definitely need to be rebuilt. This would fund the engineering portion, um, which is four hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, the estimate right now in today's dollars to put a facility down there, and I'll explain why, is three point two million. Um, and that would come after the engineering was done, we would come back. Um, and why is it so expensive down there? I mean, you can build a salt shed for a million dollars. However, we're in a wetlands area, um, and, uh, to build that facility properly, uh, and house everything inside. So when you drive into the facility, you would dump inside, you would fill everything inside, so you're not gonna get any of the salt outside. Right now, when you fill our, because our sheds are so small, when you fill those, you dump outside and then you move it inside. Um, so one, it's costing you a lot of money to accomplish that, but two, it's also impacting the environment, because there's no way you get all of that material inside the facility. Uh, rain comes, it washes away, they dump certain times, um, and we may not be there at that moment to move it in, and if it rains, we're always impacting the environment there. So one, this will be a huge, uh, benefit to the surrounding wetlands area and the environment. Um, it would make for safer operation than what we currently have, it would be inside, much better lighted. Uh, we keep lights generally pretty low, so we don't impact the neighborhoods. Um, this would be all inside, um, and I don't know where else we would go if we didn't put it back there, so. But it is expensive to put back there.
Questions, comments? Okay. Yeah, Ed?
So, if we were to find a site that wasn't a wetland site, what sort of cost would we be looking at, Rick, for the same kind of facility?
Uh, y- you'd probably be a million, million two.
You mean, just kind of like doing like back of the envelope? I mean, if the town were to purchase, say, property for two point two million and then put a new land site on, we'd be kind of like, basically the same position, right? But if the town found land for, say, a million, you know, hypothetically, we'd save a million dollars in that prod, with that project potentially, without losing functionality. So I think one of the things that I would feel more comfortable with is knowing that we've exhausted any opportunity to look at an alternative site, because it sounds like we're having a lot of, um, complicating factors with where it's currently sited, and rather than have something that could be more than three times the cost of. than have something that could be more than three times the cost of a million-dollar facility, can we maybe explore if there's any other option for placement, for siting?
We've looked, I mean, I, we.
And I don't doubt it, I mean, yeah, sure.
We haven't seen anything that would provide enough room, I guess.
It just sounds like, frankly, it sounds like not the right placement for where this kind of facility should be on the wetlands, if we're going to have something that's going to cost three times as much to.
Years ago, generally, just about every salt shed around in any community was put in areas like that, because no one used them. That's where they went.
Is it possible to put a caveat on that, then to talk about the $435,000 for the town meeting, but also with a caveat about addendum, that we exhaust the other possibilities?
Could also look to November, too, if we have to.
I mean, I would just really like to see that we've exhausted, because, I mean, it's 438 plus the 3.2, so it's 3.6 million for a facility that could maybe come land cheaper. And I'm not pretending like there's a ton of this, you know, vacant land around town, I get that, you know, but I'm just like, that's such a cost differential that I'd like to make sure that we have absolutely positively ruled out any other conceivable option, even if we have to dump it in Melrose. Anything possible, so, to the extent we could table that, just so we know that we have absolutely exhausted any due diligence, I think it would be a more prudent decision, because at least we go in knowing we've exhausted everything.
Is it more prudent to put an option in?
Yeah, I mean, it'll take us some time to do that, so we could look at. Yeah, we could look at November, I mean, we can, unless we come something early, but I don't think we will, we'll have to do a lot of work on it.
We've, I mean, we've done preliminary, looking at areas and stuff, we can do much more, we haven't focused on land that is, maybe there's a building there, that you buy it with the building and take the building down. We've looked at open kind of space areas.
I just, I mean, I think ultimately, I mean, even if the town had to purchase something, I think net-net, we might still be in a better financial position doing that, if we don't have to have all the caveats to this particular, so.
That's a good point, do you want to table it?
I would move to table it, then, until we've exhausted that due diligence. So, that's my, is that a motion to table it?
Yes, and then, second?
Second.
Second, Julie. All in favor of tabling the sand salt facility engineering part of the study, $435,000 until a future date?
Five.
Five, zero, thank you.
Okay, the public works facility repairs, quest is for $500,000. The funds would be used to do critical safety and environmental upgrades to the existing facilities, with the bottom line of not keeping people from getting hurt or injured. The funds would only address immediate critical safety and environmental issues. In September, probably, actually, prior to September 2015, we started talking about the public works facility. We've done three reports since then, a, two I've written and one that was done by our consultant with Redding, and to kind of address the need. And everyone talked about Camp Curtis. In my mind, Camp Curtis is a dead issue and hasn't moved one bit, and what we're doing is putting employees in jeopardy, along with anyone who visits there, any vendors who go there. Part of those facilities, unlike any others in town, were built in horse and buggy days, because it predates 1937, a small portion of that. Part of it was added on in the 50s, part of it was built in the early 1970s. Unfortunately, over that time, Public Works has received very little money to do any repairs or upgrades besides the additions. The last amount was 100,000, probably three or four years ago. We're actually finishing up the last part of that. The floor drain system in the 1970s building has basically collapsed completely, which is, one, impacting the flow of water that comes in from the trucks, and it holds sand debris in there, because it has collapsed, causing everything to jam up as it goes through, but it's also a major tripping hazard in that facility, and someone will get hurt. We're doing one side this year with the remainder of the money. The other side alone is $62,000 to do that, we have a bid for that. The, the floor in the equipment bay area has lifted in a number of areas, one area is right by the main lift, we're concerned with that that may end up impacting the stability of that lift. The, there's leaking in between the walls that we have not been able to locate, so there's a big concern for mold in the facility. The facility, the way it's set up, gets a lot of exhaust into offices and the lunchroom area, which is a no-no. Back when that facility was built, it was a highway facility. And then, in the 70s, they put, moved highway, parks, forestry, fleet, and everything else you can think of down there. We even store, in the wintertime, I store my water equipment in there, so it doesn't freeze like the high velocity, and it's just not a big enough facility. The columns in the back of the 1970s building are deteriorating on the outside, and you can see that's pretty obvious. And I could go on and on, but it's, and to do repairs to that facility that are needed to bring it up to where it should be is five to 10 million dollars or more, and then you still would not have the room and the height for the future, because the lift now, one, we can't lift all the trucks up high enough, because it was never built for the trucks that you have today, and when we bring a piece of equipment in, the floor is marked where there's a walkway, supposed to be a safety zone you can walk by. When we bring in a lot of equipment that, with plows on it to do repairs during a storm, they actually go beyond that safety line, so you can't even walk by. But the bottom line is, until something's done, there needs to be money spent, just for immediate repairs to make sure everything's safe for everybody.
Okay, questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to make a straight motion to authorize and approve the amount of 500,000 for the public works, not that facility repairs.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Discussion?
Discussion?
Tom, I have to mention, we're probably looking at some real significant exposure liability-wise with what Rick's described, because we're on notice of these issues. It sounds like it's, we're in a very precarious position, and obviously, we want to make sure that all of our folks are safe.
Yeah, I usually advise municipal clients to do whatever makes sense from a policy standpoint, and don't worry overly much about liability for negligence, because we have insurance, we have the benefit of the Mass Tour Claims Act, which limits liability to $100,000. But I think you've heard a convincing case that, you know, we're putting lives at risk, and that's what really counts, so.
Okay, so we have a second as well. So, all in favor of the 500,000 public works, you know, with the facility repairs, to go on the warrant? All right, okay, 5-0, thank you. Right, never mind the workers' compensation experience modification going up. A little joke, okay.
The Broadway slow sand filters, it's off filtration system for water coming out of Crystal Lake. In my mind, and I've said this for a number of years, it's probably the best filtration system that's out there. There are other approaches, but we're, that's what they used back when this was built, and it's still a very good filtration system. This number was originally 150,000, it's now 125,000. I got some additional information today, so the request is 125,000. Every year, twice a year, we go through and we'll scrape off the sludge on the sand, and when you do that, you're removing some of the sand. So, you have to go back every, we like to do it every 10 years, and replace the sand, and it's not just your average sand, and there's a lot of work involved in it, but replace or remove and put in new sand. The last time we did it, and it's all based on how well you maintain it, if you keep up with it, was 2005, so this is 13 years ago now. The, they produce, slow sand filters produce high-quality water, but as you get more, basically, scum on the top that you remove when you clean it twice a year, and you, and when you lower the sand, you have to lower the rate you can pump out, so it impacts how much you can send out into the system. The, it's, the filtration system is great in addressing a lot of things that other filtration systems won't. The, it deals good with sludge, it deals real good with giardia, and some of the other things that come up that you see in a lot of drinking systems. And I think we're fortunate to have the type of system we do, it's just you have to bring it down, probably the disadvantage is you have to shut it down to clean it all the time, so.
Okay, questions, comments? Can I have a motion to, now the number 125?
That's from the water budget, too, so, the water reserve.
It's a very smart move, though, Rick, to put one number and then drop it down.
Right.
I make a motion that we approve the Broadway slow sand filters re-sand in the amount of 125,000 dollars as requested by Mr. Stinson.
Second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
Opposed, hearing none, 5-0. Okay, Broadway treatment plant upgrades.
Yeah, and to that, Ed, you'll like this even better. I asked that you hold this to your next meeting, so I'm still working on some additional info.
Okay, getting it down to 100, I'm sure, okay.
No.
Okay, wow. Well, you're two hours early, Rick.
Two hours.
Thank you for the two-hour break.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, next board meeting is March 25th, at 7 o'clock, right here, WCAT. Matters not anticipated by the chairperson within 48 hours of the meeting. Julie.
Just a couple of upcoming events. Thursday night is the Second Annual Steam Night at the Galvin Middle School, which is the science, technology, engineering, arts, mathematics. There's going to be a number of local organizations and even Boston-based organizations exhibiting there, including, I think, DPW on stormwater. So, it's a great opportunity for young and old to like to come out and see what's happening in that realm. I think we touched a little bit upon Rail to Trail, that meeting is the 19th to, the state meeting to get some funding that will move us into the next level, and that's taking place in Linfield, the information is on our website for that. And then we heard from the Scholarship Foundation, they're doing their telethon on the 23rd, I hope everybody picks up the phone, and also, on March 23rd, is Parent University at the Galvin Middle School. So, just some, a lot going on. I just wanted to thank Steve for inviting me to sit in on the natural hazards assessment activities that are happening, it was really interesting to go through the inventory and of what natural hazards can occur in Wakefield and see all the departments really working together to make sure that we mitigate any impact, so that was an interesting activity.
Excellent, thanks, Julie. Ed?
Downtown revitalization continues to be a pretty significant priority, top priority, hopefully. The, we had some really great focus groups this past Friday, we have, the next general meeting will be on the 20, March 21st, at 7:00 PM here at the Galvin, and we also have a really, really cool interactive feature. You may have seen some of the logo floating around of Envision Wakefield, and this is all about the downtown and as much participation as possible. So, if you go onto our town's website on the homepage, click on Envision Wakefield, and we actually have this interactive map that's been created, and it outlines all the areas of focus for this project. You can pinpoint or click on a precise location on that map, and then leave a comment relative to anything, thoughts, concerns, ideas, opportunities that you see within that particular area. So, if you're driving down, or walking down, or biking, or running, whatever the case is, a particular area that you think is not working so well, pinpoint it on that map, offer your comments, and that will ultimately be collected with all the other comments, all of which are read, and ultimately, will make the project better. And so, we have this, this level of engagement with the community that I think is really 21st century and something that we haven't often done as robustly as we are with this project, so I'd encourage you to check it out. There's also a lot of information, frequently ask questions, and if you, if you have a question, you can also submit that in the same manner, and we'll keep updating that as well. It's a very, you know, kind of a live and interactive experience, and it's just very cool, so please check that out. And again, the next meeting is on the 21st at the Galvin, 7:00 PM. Thanks.
Excellent, thanks, Ed. Amy?
Just one quick announcement that we talked about at our last meeting, there's a white ribbon pledge going on for men who live in town or work in town. I'm looking at Steve and Rick Stinson as he left to talk to your staff about filling on the, taking the pledge online, it's at waveonline.org, all leading up to their event on Tuesday, the 26th, at the Savings Bank Theater, so I hope everyone will be there and hope men in town sign up for the pledge.
Yeah, a lot of them already have, so.
Yeah, the number last week wasn't so great, so, re-challenge.
Hit them over here, okay.
Yes.
Thanks, Mary. Paul?
Mr. Chair, I've done my share of talking tonight.
Okay, Tom?
If I had anything, I wouldn't bring it up.
Yeah, right.
Steve? I'm going to be very, very quick. One of the great joys, one of the great joys in this, is this job is speaking to the young people, and the MMA has a contest every year, Mass Municipal Association, for you at home, and it's, and it's eighth graders, eighth graders are challenged, if I were mayor, if I were town manager, if I were town council, I would, and that's their prompt, and then they can talk about what they would like to do, so. The eighth grade, the junior high is great, they allow me to come in and talk to them, and I get to hear what they'd want to do, and they really are very engaging and really care a lot about this community, so I thought I'd share just a couple of things that they like. YMCA, I would like a YMCA in town, kind of a cool thing, it's a theme about recreational activities, which kind of tells you where the young kids are. Hockey rink came up, we're looking at that. The blatts field came up, or the softball field, which I thought was by a couple of them. Composting came up, one student asked about composting and recycling at the schools, which has been an issue, working with them, but we are working with our provider to get recycling back to the schools there. Lay corner power, what can be done to clean that up, and so it's really fun to talk about those things and what have you. And also, one student asked me that if I could work on having later school starting times. I told him that was the one thing that was out of my bailiwick, but I would pass that one, but it's a lot of fun, and I asked them to, the eighth grade teachers, to give me the, what they consider to be the better essays, and I'll share them with the group in the rooms, they're a lot of fun to look at, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's it.
Sherry, anything for you?
No.
Okay. Thank you all very much for the three hours and eight minutes and 45 seconds, but that's good for me. Can I have a motion adjourned?
No move.
Second. Thank you very much.